Good afternoon and welcome. The Monday, June 18th, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting is now in session. Reverend Kimberly Farabee has been kind enough to come and give us the invocation and pledge allegiance. If you could all rise.
Father, we thank you for another opportunity to come before you. We ask God that you would give us wisdom, that you give us guidance as we go forth in this meeting. Father, we ask so God that you will help us with your grace to make the right decisions. And God, we pray now, Lord God, that you will just bless us on tonight. And we give your name and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Reverend Farabee. You may be seated. First order of business this evening is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the agenda. First item G, under New Business, Commissioners Report, I'd like to move that under Public Comment or after Public Comment. Under New Business, Item A, I'd like to add a memorandum of understanding between the NC Department of Health and Human Services Division of Social Services in Currituck County. And then the remainder items, A through E, moved according B, C, D, E, and so forth. And I would like to add under New Business, Item E, Item Number Two, to add an appointment to the Board of Adjustment. And with that, I'd make the motion to amend the agenda.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing non-motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Public Comment. Currently, I have Ms. Barbara Snowden signed up for Public Comment. If you could come on up, Ms. Barbara.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Snowden and I sometimes live at 154 Courthouse Road. I'm here tonight and you have a long agenda, so I want to make this very quick. But I want the people of Currituck County to know some things that are going on. The first thing is, on June 29th, at 6:30 to 8 o'clock, there will be an opening of a World War I exhibit at the Moyoc Library in the Arts Room. We have 10 panels that talk about how the war was fought. And then we have cases of some memorabilia of local people here in Currituck that fought in World War I. And one of the nice things is, before long, this list, I have a five-page typed list of people from Currituck who served in World War I, that will be up on the Currituck County website soon, so that you can check and see where your ancestors served. We'd like to invite the general public, we'd also like all of you, and invite you to come and join us for refreshments and see that exhibit. The second thing is, probably to me, the most important date, on September 15th, at 10 o'clock, Currituck County will have its official celebration of 350 years. It will be at the Rural Center, and we will hope to have a very good program for people to come. We'd like to encourage all of you to be there to celebrate this monumental birthday for the county. And finally, I know we're all getting ready to celebrate July 4th. Well, one of the things the Historical Society does on July 4th is we have a kids' parade here at the courthouse. Kids decorate their bikes or their wagons and they ride around the courthouse a couple times. Then we have a reading of the Declaration of Independence. Well, this year, we're adding, because of our 350th, we're adding two events. Anybody who comes, we're going to give them a little birthday pop to celebrate 350th. And we're unveiling a stock and pillory. There were four things that a precinct was required to do in 1668. They had to have a courthouse, they had to have a jail, they had to have a warehouse, and they had to have a militia. In 1768, Currituck was given the instructions to build a stock and pillory. Now, whether they built a standing jail, we don't know. We do know, we can prove that there was a jail standing by 1790 here, on this exact site. But the stock and pillory, which is the thing that you put your head and your hands in, and back in the old days, they used to throw tomatoes and et cetera at people who had offended them, will be unveiled and will be put on the grounds of Currituck County courthouse for the six months that is left of the 350th. And I would like to invite all of our elected officials, if you would like, we'll be glad to put you in the stock and pillory and see what happens. But we hope you will join us at 10 o'clock on July 4th to see this
Somehow I knew that was coming.
...early, early jail. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Snowden. Currently, that's all I have signed up for Public Comment. Would anyone else like to speak during Public Comments? With that, I will close to Public Comments. Moving on to Commissioner Report. Commissioner Hall.
Tour season is here, folks. And leave a few minutes earlier each day when you decide you want to go somewhere. It does take you a little bit longer. Take a breath. Remember that everybody else thought about the same thing you did. Don't honk your horn as quick when the person isn't as fast to move out of your way, or make that right turn on red, because not everybody does. Just take a breath, folks. It's hot. We're all trying to get somewhere fast. Give yourself an extra five or 10 minutes. Arrive alive and be safe.
Thank you. Commissioner White.
All right. Couple things. I got a call from the Sheriff's Department, and particularly Nathan Large, Deputy Nathan Large, and the Sheriff's Department is doing a summer camp now. I'm sure most of you've heard about that, but if you hadn't, I just wanted to let everybody know. Unfortunately, they're full for this year, so you'll have to wait till next year, assuming it's a huge success and they want to do it again. But the information can be found on the county's website, or you can contact the Sheriff's Department directly, and their Facebook page and other media outlets. Some of the stuff they're going to be doing is focusing on leadership and mentoring for the high schoolers, and then they've got one for middle schoolers as well. And wish them all the best and success in that. I met with Sheriff Leck Biker this past Thursday, and Corolla, and the Wild Horse Fund to discuss the horse that was hit and the actions around that, just to clear up anything. It was a great meeting. And during that time, Sheriff Biker mentioned that he's going to be coming to Corolla on Thursdays and up to the 4x4 as much as possible to try and interact with people there, and just be seen and talk to people. So, I'd like to thank him for that effort and getting out in the community and just hearing what people had to say. Some of the people may have noticed that we started doing some beach grading this week in the 4x4, and the parking areas from where we start, mile post 14 to mile post 17, Mark is going to be up there grading, basically right now, every Monday after the weekend carnage happens. And we'll see how that goes. We may have to do it more, maybe less. But anyway, just look for him to be doing that and help improve that as much as we can. We realize it's been a little bit of a stress and a strain and a change to how things are working, but we are putting that money to work that we're taking in to improve things up there. So, that's it for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Commissioner Beaumont?
Nothing.
Commissioner Rethridge?
I serve on the Social Service Board, and as a member of that board, I would like to thank Ms. Sarah Banks for her service to the board. She's been a dedicated member of the board and we will certainly miss her input and devotion. And it's people like Ms. Banks who make Currituck great. And as we mentioned at our last meeting, if you're interested in serving on any boards, please contact the county. We're always looking for people who are willing to serve and who would like to dedicate their time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilbert?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you.
Wow.
Nothing?
No dates.
But I don't know how to react to that.
I've been threatened, so I'm keeping it
We'll move on to Commissioner Payment.
Just one
Fair enough.
One comment. I know a while back I'd mentioned about Bill Jones or William Jones, the past Lower Currituck Volunteer Fire Department's Chief, passed away. And there's going to be a celebration of life for him this Sunday at the Currituck Middle School from 10, or excuse me, starting at 2 o'clock. If anybody wanted to come and it's, if you touched your life, or if you knew him and you just wanted to come out and pay your respects, I'm sure the family would love to see anybody out there for that. If you had more information, you can contact Lower Currituck Volunteer Fire Department for more information, but that's going to be this Sunday, starting at 2. I just wanted to pass that on to everybody out there.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I did just think of something.
Too late. Go ahead. You may go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a reminder that this weekend, the 23rd and 24th, is the annual Knott's Island Peach Festival, so make sure that you make your way over to the island. Even though the ferry is closed at this time, you can drive around, have a nice casual drive, look at the scenery, look at the road repairs that have been made, and just take your time going on over to Knott's Island and join the Peach Festival.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm done.
What I have tonight, Ms. Snowden, on behalf of the Commissioners in Rested County, I just want to thank you. Things are going to get hot and heavy with this celebration. I know you folks are putting in a lot of time and a lot of effort, and it's going to be something really special. So, thank you very much for that. That's going to be really something for everyone to remember. So, that's all I have this evening. Moving on, to Commissioner recognition of retired Sheriff, I'm sorry, retired County Sheriff Susan Johnson. If she could please come up, and any of the law enforcement that would like to join, I would appreciate that. Any law enforcement, come on up. That includes all of you. He didn't want to come up. And if I can get all the Commissioners to come up here inside the circle.
Come on up here into the
Front center.
Oh, yeah. Front center.
Someone may have been getting to a Commissioners meeting, just get you up here.
Welcome on up here. Everyone come on up. Let's kind of make sure you show up here a little bit. Susan, thank you so much. I'm sorry, but thank you. But it goes a lot deeper than that. You've been a friend to this town, your dedication to this town, your service, your commitment has been lifelong. 28 years, working for the county, big team, big sheriff. This county has so much better all than what it's 45 years. I really, really look forward to you doing your time off. And if you do a little fishing. I'll make it short, and I'm going to make it short for you, but I do want to read this resolution because it's important, so you can have to bear with you. This is a resolution, the recognition of Susan Johnson's service to the county of Currituck. Resolution of the County Board of Commissioners in appreciation of the service of Sheriff Susan Johnson to the citizens of Currituck County, North Carolina. Whereas, for 128 years, Sheriff Susan Johnson successfully served Currituck County and its citizens after completing the Currituck County Sheriff's Department, both military sheriff and Currituck County's chief law enforcement officer. And whereas, when Susan Johnson began her county career in November 1989, Currituck County Sheriff's Department was in charge of central communications, county jail, law enforcement, all covered by 16 deputies, five dispatchers, and four detention officers. And whereas, in August 2000, Sheriff Susan Johnson was appointed to Currituck County Sheriff, and the recognition of her ability and leadership was there and reported repeatedly left by the citizens of Currituck County as the Currituck County Sheriff serving until her retirement on 8/30/2018. And whereas, knowing her tenure and in response to the county's growing population, Sheriff Susan Johnson led the Currituck County Sheriff's Department to transition as the only law enforcement agency in the country, in the county from a two-room office in jail with capacity for only 16, for only 18 males, to an effective, efficient agency consisting of 62 deputies, 30 detention officers, six police staff, and a jail capacity of 63. And whereas, Susan Johnson improved the county and the lives of its citizens when she established programs like the Sheriff's Citizens Academy, Operation Madison Drop, Safe Disposal, Restriction Medication, Community Watch Programs, Project Lifesaver, Indemning Roadside Cleanup Crew, and Garbage Produced Food for Food Cantries Program, ensuring child safety seats and education for proper installation, use of seats, child seats, and safety. Whereas, recognizing that continuing education and contribution of self to profession and community are essential components of public service, Sheriff Susan Johnson graduated from North Carolina Sheriff's Association Leadership Institute, attended instruction law programs in the North Center for Missing and Adult Children, served as a member of the North Carolina Innocence Commission, co-shared North Carolina Sheriff's Association Legislative Committee, was a member of the National Sheriff's Association, and served as a member of the Board of Currituck Kids, Lower Currituck Food, Cantry, and Juvenile Attendance Council. How did you have competition? Whereas, it is right and appropriate to Reverend and Sheriff Susan Johnson's service to her county and many professional sacrifices she made to ensure public safety and welfare during her career. Now, therefore, it be resolved that Currituck County Board of Commissioners expresses its gratitude and appreciation for Sheriff Susan Johnson's selfless loyalty and dedicated service to the people of Currituck County, and extends its congratulations and best wishes to the well-earned retirees.
That's the first time I've had on shoes in 18 days.
You can't purchase these, by the way.
Very nice.
Thank you.
And also, we're not that.
Just keep coming.
These are all things to help you in your retirement. This is for travel, for all of your essential needs, for fishing and beaching. I don't know if we're going to give you the chair or not. I'm going to let you share.
Thank you all very much. You have been a friend to all of us, and I think not a lot of friends, but all of you. Now you can, okay? And that's not shoes to follow, but you have been a friend to the people, closely together with her kids, and you're a friend to have that, and you will continue to have it. You go and you give your time off, and you pay your dues.
If you have only two names, hurry to call.
Thank you all very much. Call me, we can get a book.
Have a boat trip. Have some fun now.
Enjoy.
Thank you all.
You want to take it?
Yeah.
Okay, our next. Our next item this evening is the hotel feasibility study. Presentation of the final report from Larry Lombardi, our Currituck County Economic Development Director. Come on up, Mr. Lombardi.
I am. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. Glad to be here tonight. We have some good news after having this hotel study completed. Took a few months. The feasibility aspect of building a hotel here in the mainland is a go. So, I'm just going to briefly go through the slides here. Here's the report. It's about 116 pages long, but I'm not going to take that long to go through this. So, we'll move on. And the company that we contracted with was HVS, which is out of Dallas, and they're well-known in the hotel industry. I'm going to just talk a little bit about what the study included, and then we're going to have an eye test after one of these slides. The basic subject of this study was a mid-scale, limited-service property. Now, they gave a couple of different hotels, mid-scale, what those examples are, and I'll show you later in the presentation what they look like. And again, the study was based on looking at January 1st, 2020, as the opening date. As far as hotels, looking at the study, typically what investors look at is the average daily rate, that what they call ADR, the rate in revenue per available room, which is called REDPAR, and certainly net operating income, in this case, income and expense. We're talking about 75 rooms, breakfast area, indoor/outdoor pool, depending on where it's going to be located, and a small dining area. Also, typical fitness rooms today with the lobby workstation and other things that typically you would have in this type of hotel with this scale. This was the segmentation of the market they were looking at. Now, granted, we don't have a hotel on the mainland, so you're looking at these three different groups. Commercial group, a group, when I say group, that means the, I call it the SMURF, but I think they call it something else, social military. All those groups certainly would fall into the middle category. Then certainly leisure is what we have today, but they're not stopping in Currituck County, as you see when I go through some of these slides. And again, they used a record, they did a 10-year record, because typically for real estate purposes for hotel, they like to see what it, how it runs out in terms of 10 years. And I think the next slide will show the subject property, which you're not going to be able to see, but it's in the report. The big item is the gross house profit, which is very good. It's hard to see, it's to the far right of this chart, but it basically shows the feasibility based on industry standards, based on mid-scale, all the other components that are involved with putting a hotel together. It's feasible. And that was just for the first three years, starting in 2020. And then the next slide, which is another one that you're not going to be able to see, but it's in the report, that shows what the forecast is for 10 years, for income and expense. So, now I'm just going to talk about the market area, what we're up against, and what we're going to be able to take from everyone else. The next slide just talks, as you can see, and that's a red dot on the map there. That's not necessarily the site for the hotel. And in this report, they did not give a specific site. What they did, they recommended roughly from the central part of the county down to the southern part would be the most feasible place for a hotel, and obviously on 168 or 158. Now, if you look at this particular map, the blue dots, so to speak, are really the hotels, except for the one that's down in Kitty Hawk, in Elizabeth City. And we all know, a lot of times, if people are coming in for Friday night, they're going to either stop in Elizabeth City, be ready for the next day, or as you look up towards the green, which is the Chesapeake Hotels and Motels. And then the others are down on the Outer Banks. So, those looking at that, and in their study, we definitely would be a perfect place to stop along the way, because it's the most direct route. Now, here's the big reason why a hotel will make sense here in Currituck County. And I'm only going to list a few of the demand generators, but there's, in the report, there's over 20 demand generators. For example, you know, we're talking, we know through the summer season, the hotel will get the highest rates, they'll be filled mostly during the week, certainly on Fridays. But also, you know, in the shoulder seasons, we have fishing and we have hunting, and right now, they're staying everywhere else. So, those type of things are not listed in there, but let me just do a couple of them. The obvious one is, we're growing. This is a, just look at that chart from 1970 and project it to 2020. That's a lot of people. Now, they're not all here at one time, but they're going to come and visit. You know, if you have your in-laws coming, it'd be nice if they could stay in the hotel, right? On the mainland. So, that's a positive thing. Next, the big daddy tourism. We're looking at the projection, the increase by 2035. They got to stay somewhere, so guess where they're going to stay? Mainland, Currituck. Also, our community park that's just been completed, a beautiful, beautiful complex. Now, we'll be able to do not just day tournaments, could be maybe two days, possibly three days. And if you've ever been there this past summer with the tournaments, the parking lots filled, and so you know people are going somewhere, but they're not staying with us, and they're not necessarily eating with us either. Next one, I threw that in there, Commerce Park. But really, we're trying to build critical mass there with the Technical Center, also with the Public Safety Center being built roughly in 2020. There's going to be demand for classes, seminars, things like that, where people might be able to stay for two or three days. And with having a hotel on the mainland, that will definitely fill in that gap. And this, just to throw in there, it's an opportunity zone. If you need to know more information about the Commerce Park, give me a call, I'll tell you what the benefit is for that. Next is the cooperative extension. Again, that's another area that we really don't have the ability to hold a couple different for two or three days, where we can hold classes, seminars, things like that. But having a hotel close by would definitely be a benefit. And of course, now with the water park, you know, that's what we're seeing, particularly with millennials, when they're on vacation, they're only going for maybe two or three days. They're not necessarily going to the beach for a week or whatever. So, you know, they need a place to stay. And that's our largest demographic that is in this country, and certainly, they're coming to different places for a couple of days, and it'd be nice to have a place to stay for a few days after a long, hot day with the kids going down the lazy river. Right, Laurie? We're talking about 75 rooms, breakfast area, indoor/outdoor pool, depending on where it's going to be located, and a small dining area. Also, typical fitness rooms today with the lobby workstation and other things that typically you would have in this type of hotel with this scale. This was the segmentation of the market they were looking at. Now, granted, we don't have a hotel on the mainland, so you're looking at these three different groups: commercial group, a group, when I say group, that means the, I call it the SMURF, but I think they call it something else, social military. All those groups certainly would fall into the middle category, then certainly leisure is what we have today, but they're not stopping in Kirtuk County, as you see when I go through some of these slides. And again, they used a record, they did a 10-year record, because typically for real estate purposes for hotel, they like to see what it, how it runs out in terms of 10 years. And I think the next slide will show the subject property, which you're not going to be able to see, but it's in the report. The big item is the gross house profit, which is very good. It's hard to see, it's to the far right of this chart, but it basically shows the feasibility based on industry standards, based on mid-scale, all the other components that are involved with putting a hotel together. It's feasible. And that was just for the first three years, starting 2020. And then the next slide, which is another one that you're not going to be able to see, but it's in the report, that shows what the forecast is for 10 years, for income and expense. So now I'm just going to talk about the market area, what we're up against, and what we're going to be able to take from everyone else. The next slide just talks, as you can see, and that's a red dot on the map there. That's not necessarily the site for the hotel. And in this report, they did not give a specific site. What they did, they recommended roughly from the central part of the county down to the southern part would be the most feasible place for a hotel, and obviously on 168 or 158. Now, if you look at this particular map, the blue dots, so to speak, are really the hotels, except for the one that's down in Kitty Hawk, in Elizabeth City. And we all know, a lot of times, people are coming in for Friday night, they're going to either stop in Elizabeth City, be ready for the next day, or as you look up towards the green, which is the Chesapeake Hotels and Motels, and then the others are down on the Outer Banks. So those looking at that, and in their study, we definitely would be a perfect place to stop along the way, because it's the most direct route. Now, here's the big reason why a hotel will make sense here in Kirtuk County. And I'm only going to list a few of the demand generators, but there's, in the report, there's over 20 demand generators. For example, you know, we're talking, we know through the summer season, the hotel will get the highest rates, they'll be filled mostly during the week, certainly on Fridays. But also, you know, in the shoulder seasons, we have fishing and we have hunting, and right now, they're staying everywhere else. So those type of things are not listed in there, but let me just do a couple of them. The obvious one is, we're growing. This is a, just look at that chart from 1970 and project it to 2020. That's a lot of people. Now, they're not all here at one time, but they're going to come and visit. You know, if you have your in-laws coming, it'd be nice if they could stay in the hotel, right, on the mainland. So that's a positive thing. Next, the big daddy tourism. We're looking at the projection, the increase by 2035. They got to stay somewhere, so guess where they're going to stay? Mainland Kirtuk. Also, our community park that's just been completed, a beautiful, beautiful complex. Now, we'll be able to do not just day tournaments, could be maybe two days, possibly three days. And if you've ever been there this past summer with the tournaments, the parking lots filled, and so you know people are going somewhere, but they're not staying with us, and they're not necessarily eating with us either. Next one, I threw that in there, Commerce Park. But really, we're trying to build critical mass there with the technical center, also with the public safety center being built roughly in 2020. There's going to be demand for classes, seminars, things like that, where people might be able to stay for two or three days. And with having a hotel on the mainland, that will definitely fill in that gap. And this, just to throw in there, it's an opportunity zone. If you need to know more information about the Commerce Park, give me a call, I'll tell you what the benefit is for that. Next is the cooperative extension. Again, that's another area that we really don't have the ability to hold a couple different for two or three days, where we can hold classes, seminars, things like that. But having a hotel close by would definitely be a benefit. And of course, now with the water park, you know, that's what we're seeing, particularly with millennials, when they're on vacation, they're only going for maybe two or three days. They're not necessarily going to the beach for a week or whatever. So, you know, they need a place to stay. And that's our largest demographic that is in this country, and certainly, they're coming to different places for a couple of days, and it'd be nice to have a place to stay for a few days after a long, hot day with the kids going down the lazy river. Okay, I'm just, see, these are people, look, they're lost, they don't know where they are, because they're trying to find a hotel on the mainland, and they just can't find it. But no, seriously.
I don't see a pass in the window either.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. Oh, I forgot to put that in there. True, which is by Hilton, this is just what they call hospitality net. This would be obviously where your sundries and things like that, workstations, and, you know, this is, for us, obviously, this is going to be all new. So whichever chain comes in, it's going, they're going to knock it out of the ballpark. But that's just an example of what it would look like as far as those type of things in a mid-scale hotel. Another one is IHG, Avid is what they call that. And I think I gave you all copies of the list of the different hotels, and as you can see, I mean, I'm only naming three of them, there's a whole list that's in there that could be selected from that. Another one, just one more, is Glow by Best Western Hotels and Resorts. So just to kind of have the idea of what you're going to see. And that particular market, mid-scale, the construction, it really hits a sweet spot across the country. Obviously, the economy's doing much better now, people earning more money, spending more money. So I think we just hit it right in terms of, with all the things that we have here in the county to offer, that we'll have a hotel here very soon. And that's pretty much what I have. Anybody has any questions, they can always call Larry.
Ms. Lombardi, I have a quick question. On that midsize, do they scale it by rooms or by beds? Do you have any idea how many rooms or beds that would equate to in a midsize?
Well, on this report, they use 75.
Okay.
So it really depends, but there's a lot of factors that go into the number of rooms, you know, the land cost, building, those kind of things.
Okay, but it gives us a ballpark figure.
Yeah, they just use that, sure.
Approximately 75 rooms is still better than zero.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. You're welcome. Any other questions?
Yes, sir. Excuse me, after you do the, after the feasibility study's been done, what, do you send it out to different brands of hotels, or how do you go about marketing it to the hotels?
Good question. Actually, because there's been a lot of buzz and things that I sent out there, there's already about a half a dozen of brokers who represent investors, hotel investors, that want to sit down and discuss those type of things. So hopefully, I don't necessarily need to go out and pitch it, if you will, but I would if we didn't have anybody, but, you know, they all see the demand here, and we're in a very good spot. So hopefully, out of those, we'll see where it goes from there.
Any further questions for Mr. Lombardi? Mr. Lombardi, thank you for that presentation, that's great news.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Moving on to the next agenda item, public hearing and consideration on the adoption of the annual budget for fiscal year 2018, 2019. With that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Scanlon.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. At your last meeting, I presented to the board for your consideration, a balanced budget. The budget has been put on the county website since that period of time. To date, we received an email, I think sometime Friday afternoon, from the Corolla Civic Association with various questions. The staff is working through those, we're about 80% done with answering those questions. Other than those, we've not received any questions or inquiry about the budget. Statutes do require that you have a public hearing to allow the public to make an opportunity to make comments on the budget. After the public hearing is closed, the board may adopt the budget, or you may schedule additional work sessions, as long as the budget itself is adopted by July 1st. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Mr. Scanlon, I know that several commissioners have spoken to you individually. I didn't know if all their questions have been answered, so if anyone has any questions at this point. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing. The public hearing allows three minutes for folks to come and speak about an agenda item. And when the red light comes on, I'll be, I will nudge you gently that your time is up, and I appreciate your consideration in that regard this evening. We do have a large agenda this evening, and we're going to help get through it. So with that, I will call Mr. Ed Cornet. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Ed Cornet, Corolla, been a resident in Corolla for 15 years. I build a business in the Washington DC area with over 250 scientists and engineers. Following that, I was a management consultant partner at Booz Allen Hamilton, advising commercial companies around the world, actually. And then, when I retired from that, I had six years as a professor, teaching MBA students at the Kenyon Flagler Business School, basically how to advise businesses. And I'm here today to give you my perspective on your budget on the basis of this experience. There are two types of ways in which budgets are managed, a long-term view and a short-term view. In the long-term view, you're taking your discretionary resources, you are investing them to grow the business base, and you are managing your costs to lag behind the growth that you're actually receiving in your business space. In the case of a county, it's the property, the value of the property, that's the important thing that you want to try to grow. In the short-term view, you're basically just trying to maintain your costs, you take your investment dollars to offset lack of growth of revenue, and you're basically managing to something that's a metric that, in our case, is just keeping the base property tax where it is. And you're doing that at the expense of growth. In any case, Corolla has over 3,000 small business owners who've invested and built 20,000 bedrooms. 20,000 bedrooms, investing $3 billion, which is half of the county's total property value. And don't take this the wrong way, because I've known Larry for a decade, he's a fantastic choice in this job, and what he's doing with this hotel is a great thing, but you need to keep it in perspective. The community over a decade, more than a decade, has voiced concerns about, as far back as 2005, the change of commerce told you that we have a weak rental market, 2005. We've talked about overcrowding, we've talked about beach erosion, and have been largely ignored. Last April, CCA, on behalf of the Corolla citizens, asked to have a meeting with some of the county commissioners and the county attorney to discuss the investment strategy for the use of occupancy tax and raise concerns about that. In response to that meeting, the county canceled its monthly meetings with CCA. In January, CCA through their attorney, requested public records. So far, we have not received any response from the county in that public records request. January through April, at the request of a CCA member, they said, "Why doesn't the CCA create their own budget of how the occupancy tax should be spent? Put that together and offer it to the county and sit down and have a discussion." Well, more than 100 citizens in Corolla invested their time and energy over more than three months to develop such a plan and send it to the county in April. Asked to have a sit-down with the county to discuss it in preparation of this budget, got absolutely no response. A year ago, Corolla citizens asked for 16 paid firefighters to supplement their 40-person volunteer force. They were willing to spend $1 million to do it. We had a hearing several weeks ago, and they would be willing to pay four cents, and the county's proposal was clearly twice as many people and claimed to be only 20% more expensive. But in this budget that you have in front of you today, it is clear that it's $3 million, which is three times what the citizens in Corolla had expected for these 16 firefighters. And how it got to be $3 million, I don't know. And I would like to ask each of you individually to tell us, did you know at the time you supported that, that this is where it was going to roll out? I know that Kitty and Mike, thank you very much, did not support that, but if you knew, then you knew that this tax rate was going to be 10 cents, not 5 cents.
Mr. Cornet, you're running close on time, sir.
Let me just wrap it up here. The hard numbers are here. Twice as many firefighters, it's going to cost, there's a $1 million and a half budget shortfall in this thing. How is that going to be paid? A million and a half dollars. In any event, we have serious questions about this budget, and others will be talking about things relative to the use of occupancy tax, the investment of occupancy tax, or the use of occupancy tax to offset basic tax rates. This is democracy. Government's action should be transparent. Government action should be transparent. We need an open discussion of these issues.
Thank you for your time. I would call Bill Collins. Again, I will reiterate, you have three minutes, please use that time wisely, and I will gently nudge you when your time is up, and then I will ask you to finish. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My name is Bill Collins, I live at Coral Lane in Corolla. I'm a board member of CCA, and I am speaking on behalf of the CCA, as well as myself. My comments relate to the 219 budget pertaining to occupancy tax, which I call OT. I have previously stated my views before this body concerning the legality of the expenditure of OT proceeds for sheriff, EMS, and fire services. So I won't repeat myself, but I would remind you that our opinion is, and the opinion of a very qualified attorneys engaged by CCA, believe that the expenditure of occupancy tax proceeds for emergency services is not legal. I'll limit my comments on emergency services to two items. One is, I spoke before you on the April 2 BOC meeting, and I requested that, instead of an OT grant to the startup costs for the fire district, that you make that a loan. At the conclusion of the meeting, Mr. Scanlon said that he thought the board would be in favor of reconsideration of that grant and making it a loan of county funds to the fire district, on the condition that there's an evidence that it was requested by the community. Since then, Barbara Marzetti, the president of CCA, wrote to Mr. Scanlon and requested that. So if that is still on the table, we would request that you do make that a loan and not a grant of OT funds. Second item is that the 219 budget for EMS is questionable as far as to why the seasonal EMS cost paid for by occupancy tax would represent 31% of the total EMS cost in the entire county for the entire year. That seems disproportionate. The percentage of sheriff costs that are deemed to be seasonal is 17% of the entire county budget, which I think is still questionable, but there's an anomaly there, the disparity between those two percentages that we would hope to be some explanation for. As to other TRE items in the draft budget, I note that the expenditures in COBX are in some detail, the Whalehead Club, the bike path, and so forth. But when it comes to disclosing TRE on the mainland, there is less transparency. There's a reference on page 149 of a $100,000 item for historical preservation, but it doesn't identify that project. And I ask you whether it is the old jail that you have in mind on that. There's also a reference to, on page 48, to a capital project for the proposed Moyac Community Park, and there's no detail about that project, or its cost, or the source of funding, and I would ask if that is an OT expenditure. If these are being funded by OT, we think the taxpayers are entitled to an explanation of the rationale for spending TRE on those particular projects. After our April, is that my time?
Yes, sir, it is. I'm trying to be nice.
Well, I'll just conclude with one other comment, and that is that I have great respect for Ike McCree, and he is your county attorney, but he is not the attorney for the individual commissioners. He represents the county, obviously. And my question is whether the commissioners have consulted with their own personal attorneys regarding how the occupancy tax is spent in accordance with the OT statute. And I would remind you that it's a segregated tax fund, and that you may be liable personally if those monies are diverted to unauthorized expenditures under the statute. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I'll call Jerry Adams.
I'm Jerry Adams, I reside at 790 Crown Point Circle. I am a CCA board member, and I am also president of the Crown Point Property Owners Association. And I'm here in both of those capacities. We are all very concerned about the fact that we feel that our voices are not heard. Mr. Scanlon said that we've presented questions about this budget, and 80% of them have been answered. We haven't heard any answers. Have you heard answers to any questions? Have you even seen the questions that we asked? Have you heard any answers to those questions? This is a representative government. You're supposed to be representing your constituency, the people that voted you in, the people who reside in your county. Are you listening to us? There are so many issues here that we feel we are not being heard on. We presented our position on some of the budget items, we've asked repeatedly to have meetings, to talk to someone about our concerns about this budget, to no avail. We get no response, and that's a big concern to me. First of all, it makes me very angry, as a citizen of this country, that my voice is not heard, that I am ignored, and I feel like we have all been ignored in this whole process. You're not listening to us, you're not looking at the needs. Every day, tourists are walking down Route 12, in danger. Yes, we have a bike path, but it's not completed, and parts of the, the parts that are not completed are the most dangerous parts, and you're putting people at danger. We do not have a playground in Corolla. As the president of the homeowners association, I get questions all the time from tourists that come in. Where's the playground? Where can I take my children to play? There aren't any. We don't have a playground, and you have, and we have a school over there, no playground. You're not addressing the issues that are important to us. At least, that's the way it looks to us. And when we send you a list of questions, I am very grateful that your staff is trying to answer those questions. But where are the questions? Where's the publicity about the questions? And where are the answers? We haven't seen them. Please, please hear our voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I got to say a couple of things, if you'll permit me. To, I think everyone knows that the bike path or the greenway cannot be completed in certain sections. It has absolutely nothing to do with this county, or the county staff are not wanting to get it done. There are certain sections, we do not own the dirt, and we therefore cannot complete it. We have tried repeatedly to work with these individuals. I know you know how hard it is to deal with them, because some of you live in the neighborhood with these same property owners. So in response to that, you know, we just can't, that's not us. We can't do anything about it. We've tried, and tried, and tried. We are going to be looking at putting in a bike path from Corolla down to Monterey and finishing that stretch. And as far as the playground grows, I brought that up repeatedly, I brought it up again this year to put in a budget. The county has talked about that, to look at doing something. The board has discussed that. You had mentioned some types of playgrounds, so it is something we're considering and working on. And, you know, our budget process is completely open to the public. Many of the questions that you guys asked were talked about at the budget. the questions that you guys asked were talked about at the budget meetings, but no one was here to hear that. Those meetings are made public, and you are welcome to attend and listen to what's being said. No one's been there. We just had a meeting a couple weeks ago on this, and no one showed up. It was just the board of commissioners and some county staff, and that was it. So I would implore you to please show up to these things. And then, if you're involved, it would completely change the dynamic. No one's called me specifically and asked me to sit down with them. Yes, I saw your email, and it was Friday afternoon, and I went out of town for Father's Day weekend. So that's it for now, but I just had to adjust a couple of those things, because the bike path, I know people know that we can't finish that thing, and we want to finish that thing. So, thank you.
With that, I'll call Barbara Marzetti.
Barbara Marzetti, I live at 609 Coats Court in Corolla. I won't take a lot of your time, and I have to confess, I'm at a distinct disadvantage tonight, because my ears are clogged, and I can barely hear. So if you need to say something to me, you have to look at me and talk very loudly. You got our email with our questions. To Mr. White's point about the budget hearings, we, like you all, are volunteers serving our community, and we can't always make three hours available just for the transportation time, plus the meeting time. The second meeting that you held, I never saw a notice of, and neither did anybody in our immediate board or membership. And as you all know, I do tend to try to watch your mailings and your Facebook page to follow and share what you all are doing. I appreciate Mr. Scanlon's comment that 80% of our questions have been answered. I don't know if that means we're going to see something, or if you feel like they have been answered in previous communications or venues. We're not trying to be difficult. We just want to be informed. As Jerry said, we just want to be heard. We want to have a voice in the process. We're more than willing to meet with you all at any time. We're not always going to agree, and that's fine, but we need to be civil, and we need to sit down to talk about it and figure out a way to go forward. As far as the bike path, I just heard on the way over here that an email went out last week, and I saw my name on the list. I didn't get it. Nobody else I know on that list got the email about a meeting Wednesday or Thursday on connecting Corolla. So I don't know what that was about. It went out supposedly on the 12th, for a meeting on the 14th. Nobody got it. So anyway, enough said. We'd like to work with you, and continue to work with you, and we're not ogres. And we're also fairly reasonable, educated people. We thank you for your service and your time. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Marzetti. I've got a couple of comments, if I may. Mr. Cornet mentioned that we met in Corolla, myself, several commissioners, county attorney, county manager, and several folks from Corolla. And on more than one occasion, the county commissioners, myself, Commissioner White, Commissioner Beaumont, have reached out to the Corolla Civic Association. We expressed an interest to want to come together to solve their needs. At no time after that meeting did we say, "We're not going to meet with you ever again." So, Mr. Cornet, that was a misleading statement, if I can keep that for the record. No way, shape, or form was that ever said. We did not discontinue, Mr. Cornet, and the next thing would be to say that there was no response to your request for your public records. That is an incorrect statement. You have been notified that we are working on it. If I can, Mr. McCree, how many pages of documents would that consist of?
I don't know about the number of documents. The emails are thousands of emails, and we've gone through all of this to make sure that there was no personnel or other types of information that should remain confidential. In fact, so far, what we have found in response to discovery requests will be forwarded to the CCA attorneys this week.
And you have been in contact with the CCA attorneys?
I have had several communications with the CCA attorneys, keeping them abreast of where we are in the process, and why it was taking the length of time it has taken to go through the records to be responsive.
Thank you for that clarification. If I can, on occupancy tax legality, Mr. Scanlon, is the county audited every year on their use of occupancy tax?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. When was the last time we had a notice of any violation, or something we were doing illegally?
To my knowledge, never.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Just for some clarity for the other folks out there, just making sure everyone understands where we are and where we're going. Ms. Marzetti had mentioned that an email was sent to the county. We have been in the budget process for close to six months. We have had several meetings. Every meeting has been advertised. If you didn't find it, or didn't see the last meeting, I don't know why that would be. We have rules that we have to abide by for public meetings. Those rules were met. I do not know why you were not notified, or you missed it. The request from the Corolla Civic Association came in Friday afternoon at 12 o'clock. It is Monday at 7:00 PM on a commissioner workday, when commissioners spend the entire day here, and county prepares for a public meeting. And Mr. Scanlon has worked through 80% of their requests. I think that's pretty good. That's pretty strong. Yes, you will get written responses to those questions. And yes, if there are any issues, we will address those issues. This budget is a dynamic budget. We get budget amendments almost every single meeting. When we find something's wrong, we take care of it. We always have, we always will. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during a public hearing on this issue? With that, I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, please.
I'm just going to close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You may. Go ahead.
A couple of other comments that were made, that I, it's ironic that Mr. Cornet mentioned, you know, the needs of Corolla, and the fact that the county's not listening to them. As I remember correctly, don't we have a budget item to do the sand study for all of Corolla?
It's in the budget, yes, for engineering services.
So that would imply it's the county's intention to actually give, well, Mr. Cornet specifically, what he's been asking for, and that's, we're going to do some science, some analysis, on where the beach is, and how the beach is progressing, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And that benefits that tax base that he referred to, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Another topic that was brought up was, you know, how Corolla asked for 14 firefighters, and instead, we gave them 19. As I remember correctly, and, you know, I'd like to go back and examine what exactly Corolla, how we got to that point, not to rehash last meeting, but at the request of Corolla, as agreed to, Corolla admitted and came forward to the county, saying they could not provide adequate fire protection for the residents and our tourists with the resources that they had available. Specifically, their average age of a firefighter was 67 years old. It was thrown about many times that, you know, while we would all like to save grandma, maybe we're going to do the best we can. Unlike a volunteer fire department, or a group, the county has an obligation that once notified that that organization is not capable of providing the level of professional firefighting that we would expect as a resident and as a citizen. The county has an obligation to provide, or do the best it can to provide that service, as quickly and as effectively as it possibly can. Countless hours were spent, not only working with internal county staff, but through Chief Melton and Deputy Chief Riley, to come up with the most cost-effective plan that would accomplish what the needs of Corolla are, protecting that tax base that we like to refer to so eloquently. As far as where the money is, if you look at the spreadsheet a little closer, and I'm sure our county manager can go through it, there isn't a $1.5 million deficit in the fire line item. So, again, you know, it's great to come up and throw these things around, but we need to know our facts before we accuse the county and my fellow commissioners of not being in the loop as to what the true costs are. And then finally, and I'm not asking for an answer to this, all of the opinions that were brought up were by board members or members of the CCA, the Corolla Civics Association, which, as I remember correctly, it's not mandatory to be part of that organization if you're a homeowner or a resident of Corolla. It's an optional membership and a buy-in. I, for one, used to be a member of the CCA, but the policies of the CCA did not agree with where I believed we needed to be as an organization. Therefore, I elected to no longer remain part of that organization. So you're not speaking for all of the county residents in Corolla and Carova, as need be. You're speaking for the members of that group and of that organization. So that needs to be clarified as well. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Beaumont.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions. I guess, and Mr. Beaumont said it pretty well, and that is that it's not that I came here, when I moved here, to expect certain things. I came here because they already existed, fire, police, schools. And when an organization tells me they can't, not one, but two in the county say they cannot provide those services, I expect somehow those levels to stay the same, because that's why I came here. Not because I wanted better, or anything else, although we all do. And to hear that it's a $1.5 million shortfall scares the hell out of me, because I tell you, sitting in on the meetings, we talked about the 5 cents, we talked about a 2 cent, we talked about a 4 cent, just a couple of weeks back. And we asked about where the money would be, such as why it's 5 cents now, and not, you know, waiting three years. And I was assured by listening to the board, and Mr. Scanlon and everybody, that we want to be prepared in year four and five, when the safer grant no longer exists, that we have the money so we don't have to go back and say, "Hey, I need more money." So we are looking down the road. One thing I found with the county and the residents, and myself even included, sometimes we don't all speak the same language. In the first few meetings, pretty rough, even something as simple as a park. We get beat up pretty well, and so do the citizens. Eventually, we realize we're kind of saying the same things, we're just not asking them the same way. One of the things I've learned in my four years is that sometimes you have to believe what people are trying to do on both sides. You have to believe in the faith of it. You have to believe in the figures. Sometimes they don't all match up, but you're hoping that in that two-year budget, or that one-year budget, that they do. And that's been a tough one. Again, I'm nervous about after hearing about this $1.5 million shortfall. I couldn't find it. Not to say it doesn't exist, but I've got to go on the faith that I think I read it well. I asked my other commissioners. I asked Mr. Scanlon, that we are looking at it. And if there's somewhere, Mr. Scanlon, that I'm missing this $1.5 million shortfall, or do we know which line he's talking about? Just because that's a hell of a figure.
I'm at a loss to what that is in reference to, but I will make an assumption, based on the other comments that were made, specifically that the services is twice as expensive as we discussed at our public hearing we had several weeks ago, and that it's over 3 million. I think the piece that's being lost in that, and it's a piece that was discussed during the budget work sessions, is that Fair Labor Standards treats fire services differently than it treats EMS services. And we are converting the EMS service to a fire schedule, and when they reference the 3 million, what they're seeing is not only fire services, they're also seeing the EMS services in it together. The combination of those is what's in that line item, or that budget, that they feel like it's doubled. It hasn't doubled. It has an EMS service in it. I believe what the references, they see 1.5 being transferred in to plug a deficit. No, the 1.5 represents the amount of money historically that's been paying the EMS services that came out of the general fund, is continuing to cover the cost of that service, and is being transferred into the newly created fire district to pay for the EMS side of that operation that they always have paid for. But the whole system there, as we discussed, was being converted over to a 212 system versus a 40-hour workweek. And out of being able to do that, it freed up a whole shift of EMS that could now be moved over to the fire side. So we keep hearing that we gave them more than they asked for. We were able to provide additional fire coverage at no additional cost by changing the way that we calculate overtime, which is allowed within the Fair Labor Standards. So the bottom line, I think, is Commissioner Beaumont was saying, I think they asked for 16, and we actually hired nine, but we got additional crews off the EMS that went to fire, because we went from a four shift to a three shift. So we actually were able to put additional fire protection out at no cost. But the budget reflects the entire operation in the district, both the EMS and the fire. The fire is still the cost that we provided to you at budget work sessions, still the cost that we presented you at the public hearing, but you're seeing the EMS side. And again, I think the 1.5 they're referencing is, historically, 1.5 paid for the EMS service, and so we continue to put that in. So we made a transfer from the general fund to cover the EMS cost. So the 5 cent is covering the fire, the 1.5 is covering the EMS, so you had a $3 million budget.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon.
I'd like to ask Mr. Scanlon, the law requires us to have a balanced budget by July 1, correct?
Yes, it does.
And you expect to have these questions answered within a reasonable time before...
Well, I mean, as it was mentioned, we got five pages of questions that came in Friday afternoon. We started working on them this morning, the staff. Several staff members are answering different pieces. I see no reason by midweek, the end of the week, not having this out. And to give them some assurance, we are answering the questions. We're not providing non-answers as answers. We're doing our best, because most of what I've seen so far is, the information is in the budget document. It's either, they're not seeing it correctly, or misinterpreting it, but the information, the vast majority of this is in the document, and so I'm providing clarity and showing them where the document they can find to answer the questions.
And if we, as a board, have any problems with it, as the chairman said, we can go back and amend what we passed.
Yes, ma'am. The budget document is, it lives throughout your whole fiscal year. You are free to make adjustments to it in almost every meeting you do by doing a budget amendment. So priorities can change, appropriations can be modified, they can be changed. So even with whatever action you take tonight, at any meeting, the board has the ability to amend and modify their budget.
So we have 12 days to go ahead and approve a budget. So if we approve it tonight, we can change it at the next.
You could change it at your first meeting in July.
Okay.
And one last thing, on the $100,000, is that the jail that Mr. Collins was talking about?
It is the jail.
Okay.
And I think the other question was the Moyac Park, and to give them some assurances, OxyTax is not paying for the cost of the Moyac Park. It's coming out of land transfer. That's one of the questions on the list. I think they're very concerned that OxyTax doesn't fund that. It is not funding that project.
And poor Moyac's been waiting for a park, I think, a whole lot longer than Corolla has.
There will be a statue of Ms. Etheridge there, I'm sure. Mr. Scanlon, how many questions were asked in that email?
I haven't counted the number of them. It's five pages long, so somewhere between maybe 40 and 50, but I haven't actually counted all the questions.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. And thank you for your efforts, and thanks for your efforts in getting those questions answered. And I know that they will get a response, and I know they look forward to that. So, thank you. Any further statements or questions, comments? With that, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the budget as presented.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. With that, I'm going to take a 10-minute recess, if we can be back here in place at 7:20. Thank you. Okay, folks, we're back in session. Moving on to the next agenda item, public hearing in action, PB 15-25, Grandi Solar Farm Ecoplex Incorporated, Kirtok County Superior Court has remanded this application back to the Board of Commissioners for consideration of conditions on the use permit for a solar facility located along the north side of Uncle Graham Road, Tax Map 108, Parcel 95E, Parcels 95G, and 95H, Poplar Branch Township. And with that, I will hand it over to Mr. McCree.
Mr. Chairman, just to explain to you, and to the general public, why this matter is back before you, and what it is that you... public why this matter is back before you, and what it is that you are required and able to do tonight with regard to this application. As you recall, on April 4th, 2016, this matter was before the board on application of Ecoplexis and others to construct a solar array facility in Grandy on the Old Goose Creek Golf Course. After a lengthy hearing, the Board of Commissioners made certain findings in an order that was issued on May 2nd, 2016, in which the county Board of Commissioners at the time determined that the applicant had not met its burden in showing that all the elements required for issuance of a use permit were present through evidence and other testimony. Specifically, the Board of Commissioners found that the proposed solar farm would endanger the public health or safety. That had to do with some testimony with regard to, I think, flood, flooding of adjacent property and stormwater management issues, would not be in harmony with the surrounding area. And that had to do with some testimony from parties for the neighborhood residents that it would have a detrimental effect on their property values and was not in keeping with the harmony of, or the manner in which the surrounding neighborhood had developed, and would not be in conformity with the 2006 land use plan. And that related to a provision in the land use plan which appears on its face in any event to state that the county would not support any energy-producing facilities in the county. The matter was then appealed by the applicant Ecoplexis to the Currituck County Superior Court. Briefing and arguments then occurred before the Superior Court. The Superior Court sided or agreed with the county Board of Commissioners and affirmed the board's decision to deny the application. Ecoplexis then appealed the matter to the North Carolina Court of Appeals. After oral argument, in Raleigh, the North Carolina Court of Appeals issued its decision on December 19th, 2017, and reversed the Superior Court's affirmation of the Board of Commissioners' denial of the use permit, and also remanded the matter back to the Superior Court, which has now entered an order in accordance with the Court of Appeals' decision reversing the Board of Commissioners' denial of the use permit. Specifically, the Court of Appeals determined that Ecoplexis had indeed presented a prima facie case with evidence during the course of the hearing, had met its burden, and because it had met its burden, showing that it met all the requirements for issuance of a use permit, that it was then incumbent upon those in opposition to present substantive competent and substantial evidence to rebut Ecoplexis' evidence. The Court of Appeals determined after analysis that those in opposition had not done so, and therefore their evidence was not sufficient to overcome Ecoplexis and the meeting of its burden for issuance of the permit. Consequently, the Court of Appeals stated that, upon remand, the Board of Commissioners may hear and require reasonable terms for the petitioners to comply with the development standards, including petitioners securing any required approvals of other local, state, and federal authorities and agencies' permits required to operate the solar array energy farm. What that means is that there is no more evidence to be presented or considered by this board as to whether the elements for issuance of a conditional use permit have been met. The Court has, the Court of Appeals and Superior Court by its subsequent remand order have determined, yes, the evidence is sufficient to meet the burden, and the commissioners must make appropriate findings and issue the permit. What is left for you to do now, though, you have the ability to consider what reasonable conditions, as provided for in the UDO, may be imposed upon this project. And following that consideration tonight, you then may add those conditions to the permit, but a permit must, as the court have said, be issued to this applicant. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that you open this matter as a quasi-judicial hearing for the purpose of receiving and considering any evidence with regard to conditions to be placed upon the use permit for the applicant. And as you do so, as you normally would do in a quasi-judicial matter, call for anyone who intends to testify or present evidence to the board during the course of consideration of conditions be placed under oath.
Mr. McCree?
Thank you, Mr. McCree.
Just for layman's terms, so everyone understands, basically, we are required to pass this...
That's correct.
Okay. Even though we know...
You are required to issue a use permit with conditions that are reasonably related to the use of this property, that are contained within the development standards for a solar array, in particular, as provided for by the ordinance that was in place at the time that Ecoplexis made its application.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCree. With no further questions from Mr. McCree, don't go anywhere at this point. If I can, ask anyone that's going to speak to this issue, other than the public hearing, to come up and be sworn in. Other than the public hearing. If you're in the public hearing, you do not have to be sworn in. If you could please put your left hand on the bottom, raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, you may be seated. And with that, I will hand the mic over to Ms. LaCicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to briefly go over the conditions that staff, county staff and Ecoplexis staff have worked together to present to you tonight. Just for a brief reminder, it is the Old Goose Creek Golf Course is the property in question in Grandy. It is a 118-acre track. There's, there was a little bit of discrepancy, but the two properties that were, that the use permit is for were combined recently, so there's only, this is the one property for, for the use permit. So, so I'm just going to go over the conditions for the issuance of this permit, that there's going to be a 300-foot setback from the residential zone use, and a 100-foot setback from all other property lines. And this is consistent with the site plan that Ecoplexis has submitted to county staff. The maximum height for the panels will be 15 feet. There will be a type D buffer at the residential zone use at that property line, and a type C at all other property lines. There are 24 maximum height of unwanted vegetation and weeds will be allowed, so the grass and weeds would be allowed to get no taller than 24 inches at this facility. There is some, and it's some question about the groundwater, groundwater monitoring wells. That was a requirement in, within the UDO in 2016, when this was originally heard. Since then, several of the commissioners have met with First Solar, have met with another solar company for, to see if they, if you could have a certified UL panel, if you're using that certified panel, would it be okay to drop off the monitoring wells? That is a condition that the board would may want to discuss tonight. They still would have to submit an impact analysis, and they have submitted a decommissioning plan, and they will need to submit a decommissioning performance guarantee at the time of building permit. That decommissioning performance guarantee will be, will require to be 115% of the salvage value. They have provided a pollinator habitat on the site plan, and the construction hours, we have agreed to 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. daily. A couple of more conditions that staff is recommending be placed on this use permit would be that the buffer is in place prior to construction, and that there are, there are outstanding drainage issues that must be addressed with the county engineer, and that all the outlet flows and levels were reduced or similar, except the outlet at the northeast corner of the site. The ditch level increased, and the flow increased as well in that area. The report says the peak is brief with less total flow. It is recommended the flow and water level be reduced in northeast corner of the site so that the post-development does not exceed the pre-development from an equal storm event. With this site plan, they are reducing the impervious surface on the site. They are going from, the existing impervious on the site is to, just under 202,000 square feet. Their proposed new impervious surface is going to be 86,240 square feet, sorry, 86,845 square feet. They say they're going to be reducing impervious coverage. And with that, I will take any questions about the conditions that staff is proposing for this project.
I have a couple of questions, if I may. Can you please describe a type D and a type C buffer?
Yes, let me get, essentially, a type C is going to be a step up from a type D. Type D is not going to be completely opaque, is what we've spoken about prior, but it will be more intense, and I can get the, I can pull the definitions if you want...
That's okay, just, our review is fine, just for some clarity.
Okay. So there'll be shrubs and canopy trees and understory trees, and that will go up in intensity. A type D is more intense than a type C buffer, so that will go up in intensity around the residential area.
No fencing allowed, is that correct?
There will be...
No fencing for, for...
Opacity.
Opacity.
For opacity. No, they will have a security fence on the property.
Okay. The decommission plan, is that acceptable to the county?
Yes.
Okay. And the hours, eight to, seven to eight, does that include weekends or no?
Right now, it does. It does include weekend.
Seven days a week?
Yeah, that's a concern I've received
Yeah.
about Sundays and Saturdays. I don't think we should...
A little break.
Okay, we can leave that, just a question of mine. We'll leave that at prefer discussion. Currently, that's all the questions I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chairman took a few of my questions, but I got one about during the construction, with it being so close to neighborhoods and all that, I know we're going to have the, it would be required to have the berm and all the vegetation in place, excuse me. What about, and again, with the construction, I have no idea, but airborne dust, I mean, nuisance, stuff like that, is that going to be watched, or can the neighboring community, if they start seeing
I'm sure they'll be called.
stuff coming on their property, houses, cars, can that be called in to be stopped or addressed?
They will, the dust will be suppressed during the construction, perency DEQ practice standards, and if, during construction, if the dust becomes an issue, yes, staff can be called, and then we will make contact with Ecoplexis, with their crew, that they would need to address that immediately.
Any further questions for Ms. LaCicero at this time?
I have several, and it may be ones that you may not be able to answer, but they can answer later on. But starting in the first part, using the map, I know originally, when we had this in front of us, there were two parcels that they wanted to have included. Is that only one parcel, where the front parcel isn't included this time, if I'm not mistaken?
You're correct, there were two parcels originally. Whoops. And this front parcel right here, they've combined it, this is the general business zoned area. At the site plan, they are not including the general business zone area with the solar panels. They are using it as the buffer area between the properties out on the, that are adjacent to the road and the solar panels. So they're using this as some of the buffer area.
Okay, so we're keeping the property on the road frontage for commercial use?
Yes.
Okay.
So will that, I'm sorry, is, will that be developed before they start the project?
Will it be developed?
The commercial?
No, I mean, it's not going to be for commercial use. It's going to be part of the, it's going to be, the properties out here are still going to be commercial, out on the front.
Buffers.
The buffers, yeah, but the buffer is going to stay undeveloped with the pollinator habitat.
Okay, I misunderstood you, I apologize.
And I probably...
Sorry, Mr. Hall.
I think I'm with you.
Okay.
At least, I think I am. Weeds, 24 to 30 inches tall. I mean, can my yard get 24 to 30 inches before the county steps in?
Yes, it can.
Wow. I would have thought 12 inches would be where I started seeing critters and other things. Okay. Construction activity, one of the things we heard with some of the other solar farms was when they were working at midnight or whatever else, when there's a violation past 8:00 p.m., how do we stop them, or how do we keep them from doing it the next time? Do we stop their work until they come back and explain to the Board of Commissioners?
We would treat it like a code violation, that they would, we would notify them, we would, once again, if they were, if we're notified, staff would then call Ecoplexis and ask that they adhere to the, adhere to the construction hours. And if they can't do that, then we will start fining them.
And it's an escalating thing, I think, is what we learned from today's work session?
Yes.
Okay.
I would suggest that you might also be able to, in the course of enforcement, place a stop-work order on the project until a plan is presented to address the problem that's satisfactory to county enforcement staff. Up to, as the ordinance provides, there may be a revocation of a permit for noncompliance. That would come back to you for a quasi-judicial hearing.
And I think the questions that are being asked, just for folks' information, I think the questions that are being asked are to protect the citizens around that construction site. They're not there to be difficult, they're not there to be unreasonable. We just feel that we need to protect the folks that are around that development.
And their lessons learned from previous developments.
Just moving forward with that, so, if I can.
All right. Next one, how much water in the ditches prior and after filling in the ponds? I mean, you're already telling me that I'm hearing some of these are going higher than original, and when we fill in the ditches and ponds, I'm hoping they can answer those questions, because that water's got to go somewhere. And I think I heard millions of gallons, and again, I'm not, I can't say how much is in my pond. But I mean, that's my concern there, is we're, we're already hearing higher levels, what changes?
That would be a question for the applicant and their site designer.
Okay. Let's see, next thing, page 33, paragraph 2, I saw this thing in here, and it kind of surprised me, exempted from stormwater manual. If you would look at page 33 on our packet, I'm sorry, my mind, it takes me a while. Let's see, "Based on the limited amount of impervious coverage intended for this site, it will be exempted from the stormwater manual. It is anticipated that the amount of coverage created for the site will be below the 10% of the site. Stormwater runoff will be handled by the existing ditch system on the site. Where necessary for placement of equipment or access, existing ditches will be filled or rerouted, and new grass-lined drainage swells will be created as approved by soil and water." It kind of, again, exempted from the stormwater manual, I mean, I'm not...
Well, they're decreasing their impervious surface, they're taking up the existing cart paths, and, which is right now is just under 202,000 square feet. And their proposed access drive and the equipment pads and the posts of the solar panels are going to be totaling 8,000, 86,845 square feet. So they're, since they are decreasing their amount of impervious surface, they will not have to, they're, not have to meet the stormwater, or requirements in our stormwater manual.
So that's their purpose, okay, because that's the one thing that, when I read that, whoa. I think that's it for me.
Okay, if we can, at this time, call the first applicant up from Ecoplex. If you could state your name and address for the record, thank you, sir.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commissioners. My name is Mike Fox. I'm an attorney with Tuckleduggins in Greensboro, North Carolina. My offices are 100 North Green Street, Suite 600. And thank you for your time and consideration. I do want to echo what the staff has said. I do want to echo what the staff has said, we've had, you know, very productive meetings with your staff, they've been great to work with, and your county attorney, to try to come to agreement before you here tonight, in terms of what the conditions may be, and the good news is, all of the things that your staff has indicated, we're in agreement with, in terms of the conditions, and we've worked hard on those. I did want to correct one thing, I think Commissioner asked about 24 to 30, we've actually agreed to 24, so it would only be 24, it wouldn't be 230. But, all the setbacks, the buffering zones, all those things, we agree to. I did want to clarify one thing on the maximum height, that's for the panels, correct? Because they would certainly not be above 15 feet, but we might have some power poles that are taller than 15 feet. Normally, what we see is, that maximum height applies to the panels.
That's what I read, maximum height.
Yeah, exactly.
The maximum height of the panels, yes.
Yes, yeah, so thank you for that. I did want to make a request in regards to the groundwater monitoring wells, we understand those were required when we applied, and we're prepared to do that. We would like to ask you if, if you do change your ordinance before we get to that point in our construction, we would, we would ask to be treated like everyone else going forward, if you would consider that, so, that's just a request, we're not asking to be treated any differently, but if you do decide that, that that is a change that you want to make, we would ask to be considered like that, and if there's a requirement of a certain panel or certain equipment in order to get that treatment, we'd be prepared to meet that, so. As indicated, the decommissioning plan and performance guarantee, the plan's been provided, the guarantee will be provided. We did feel that the pollinator habitat was a good fit for this project, and then the construction activity, the hours, we're very sensitive to that, we know we're working in a, an area surrounded by homes, so we, we will be a good neighbor, and so, obviously, if anybody has any concerns, we want them to let us know, and we'll take care of them, so. We, we feel like that solar farms can be very good neighbors, they're quiet, they don't have any odor, no noise, that kind of thing, so we want to live up to that, so we make that commitment to you. In regards to the, the.
Mr. Fox, let me ask you real quick, so.
Sure.
I echo the thought of construction basically in the middle of a neighborhood on Saturdays and Sundays. Were it to be Monday through Friday, does Ecoplex, or does this project have a problem with that?
Typically, we don't work, you know, most weekends, but sometimes we have to, and if there's a deadline, like we have to get a, you know, an inspection done, or something like that, or if we're running up against a completion deadline in order to hook into the grid when the utility tells us we have to, so. It's not our plan to operate seven days a week, but we would like that flexibility if the project required it when we get to that certain point.
Best laid plans of mice and men, right, intentions are great, et cetera. I guess, probably the biggest offender when it comes to the construction is not necessarily heavy equipment moving or dirt moving. The problem's going to come in when you're driving poles for 13 hours Saturday and Sunday, and, and I don't know that that would be necessary to meet a construction deadline, but I think that is going to be very desirable to not see pole driving. It's my understanding that's how you're going to be driving the poles, I mean, installing the poles, the poles.
Right, that's typically the experience. I've got a couple of folks here with me, I neglected to introduce them in the beginning, Kim Hamby is our engineer who has done our groundwater analysis, and she's here to answer questions if you need on that particular aspect of it, and Jim Haley, Jim, raise your hand, Jim is an engineer with Ecoplexus, and I'll confer with Jim about your question about that, and we'll get an answer to you before we finish here. Absolutely, we understand. I did want to address one thing on the groundwater, we've, we've recommended a condition, we understand the concern that, that no one wants any additional water to come off this site, and, and we're confident we can achieve that, and so, I've forwarded to your attorney a draft condition where, if I could, let me just read it to you, that I think may make folks comfortable with what, you know, we're doing in terms of groundwater. The condition would be, a drainage analysis will be prepared based on the design plans and submitted to the county engineer, showing the following conditions during the 10-year, 24-hour statistical storm. First, the peak stormwater discharge from the proposed site will not exceed existing peak discharge. Second, that peak surface water elevations on adjacent properties will not be increased. So two things there, one, we will not, when we're finished, there won't be any more water coming off the site than's coming off there now, so that addresses the one concern that I think the county engineer had identified, that there was one, one spot in our original plan that had a slightly increased discharge. And then second, that we would not put any more peak water surface on adjacent properties at all, so. Hopefully, those two, I, we heard and understand your concerns, and we've drafted that to try to address that, so that it's crystal clear what we would be doing.
If I can, sorry, if I can. With that statement, what happens if that, if your plan doesn't work?
We would have to come in, we would have to come in and address it, that's right. Now, now, just to be fair in terms of understanding the process, and Ms. Hamby can speak to this far more eloquently than I can, you know, at this point, what she, when she does a stormwater analysis, it's hypothetical based on what the final grading plan of the site is, and she's, she's got a good feel for what that might be, but, you know, until you get in there and you do all the surveying and the study, you don't know exactly what it is. So what we're committing to do is, whenever that, that surveying and the final grading plan is done, then we'll update our stormwater plan to guarantee those two conditions, so instead of trying to make a plan based on what we think's going to happen, we're going to make a plan based on what will happen, and we have an extremely high degree of confidence that we can achieve that.
Have you been to those properties on Uncle Graham Road in that corner that flood extensively with the animals, and, I mean, they have, they have a flooding issue, that's awful.
Yes, sir, I recall the pictures, I've seen all the pictures, and I remember.
So you're not going to help address that, you're just going to make sure it doesn't get any worse, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I'm, I'm not saying that, that, that we won't make it better, but we can guarantee we won't make it worse, and that's our legal obligation, I mean, we can't, you know, necessarily.
Well, I understand, but, I mean, there's a major concern, and, and you're saying you're going to live up to it, which is great, because if it doesn't, we will be calling you to fix it, you're right.
Right.
But, but that's a big concern for those residents right there, is it's already terrible at times.
Well, and, you know, I've spoken to Ms. Hamby extensively about it, and there, you know, there are, there are a lot of things going on there that are not directly related to the golf course property, that are issues in regards to why, you know, why it does what it does there, and it's, it's just like when you have a, somebody coming in with a, you know, wanting to do a, a development, where you're looking at traffic impact, you know, sometimes you've already got a lot, you've already got a traffic problem there before the person comes in, and so, you ask them to mitigate what they're doing, but they can't, it's often difficult to improve the whole situation, that's sort of, that's generally beyond their control or their ability to do.
Is there a solution, when talking to Ms. Hamby, that would benefit both sides, to getting rid of some of that water in that spot?
Well, I think, you know, some of the things, obviously, we're going to reduce, we're going to, we're going to hold a little more water, so we'll reduce what's coming off, but, you know, I, I don't know that she has done a study as to what the ultimate solution would be, that would involve multiple parties, you know, your, your county engineer, probably, you know, DOT, you know, all the landowners nearby, and I, she, that's not within the scope of what we've asked her to do. I'd be happy to answer any, any questions you have, and I can also consult with Mr. Haley about Mr. Beaumont's question.
How long do you anticipate construction to go on until the site's finished, at least maybe the pounding part, the really noisy parts?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good opportunity for me to get Mr. Haley up here, because he's going to be able to speak specifically about that. If you could come up and give your name and address.
If we can first, any further questions at this point, for the county attorney, for his, for their attorney, at this point, any further questions? If we can, thank you, Mr. Haley.
Hi there, Jim Haley, address is 807 East Main Street, Durham, North Carolina, 27701, I'm a licensed PE in North Carolina, an engineer for this project. To answer your post question, I'm guessing it's going to be about 15 working days to drive all the posts for that project. And so, going back to the, the time of day restrictions or weekend restrictions, we could do some type of weekend restriction, because it's only going to affect them for maybe two weekends, so.
I think that would be very preferable, so they can have some relief from the noise on the weekends and be able to, you know, enjoy their backyard.
Okay, so.
Are you anticipating them going up until the 8:00 PM thing on the other days?
If that's, if that's what we're held to, then, then that's likely what they would do.
I mean, I don't know how many hours you projected in, in that period that you need.
I just basically extrapolate it based on sites that I've known, that I've seen them drive, or they'll show up with like four machines and just do the whole site, so.
Two to three weeks, reasonably, reasonably two to three weeks would be.
Yeah, yeah, I think so, and if we want to put weekend restrictions on pile driving, that's something we can do.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any further questions for Mr. Haley?
Okay, so, are there ponds underneath where those, the panel layout's going to be?
Yes, there are.
Um.
He wants his balls back.
You don't, you don't want to go, you don't want to go out there and there.
Okay, so, and what's the estimated, how much water's, I mean, I'm assuming the intent is to de-water the ponds and then backfill or grade out?
Yeah, exactly. Kim might be able to give you a better estimate of the, of the gallons of water, but yeah, that would be it, de-water the ponds and then fill them up.
I'll defer the rest to her.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Kim Hamby with Timmons Group, our office is in Elizabeth City at 1805 West City Drive. To address a few of the comments made about the stormwater, and I know Commissioner Hall mentioned already seeing a rise in the water level in the ditches. Just to summarize the initial report, there is a small peak shown in the current report that is only located at the very northeast corner where our control structure will be installed to control all the discharge from this site. It's a small jump, and I have discussed that with Mr. Weatherly, and assured him that we have plenty of space to attenuate that if I need to work a little bit more with the ponds and the interconnected drainage system to resolve that, I certainly can, but the results actually show that if you go to the ultimate outlets of the entire drainage area, one under Grandy Road to the west and one under the highway to the east, the peak discharges at both of those locations are already shown to be lower based on the pond configuration and the interconnected ditches shown on this plan, and also, we are showing a reduction in peak water surface elevation during the 10-year storm of about half a foot in the most northwest corner of the site, and up to eight tenths of a foot in some locations at the southwest corner of the site, which is the area that currently experiences the worst flooding near the intersection of Uncle Graham Road and Grandy Road. So, those will be improved, the drainage in those areas, the flooding will be lessened by the system that we intend to put in, and we will certainly work with the county through our ultimate design to show that even that short peak discharge will be shaved ultimately. As far as the de-watering, I can't tell you exactly how many gallons we're talking about, it's still unknown as how deep those ponds are, but what I can tell you is this new perimeter system will have to be constructed prior to any de-watering activities taking place. The new system will be utilized as part of the erosion control system, it will be set up with baffles and skimmer-controlled discharge, so that any water coming from those ponds will be pumped into those new areas and detained for, actually, they require decanting, they will remove water from the surface only, trying to restore normal level within a two-to-five day range during construction, and that will be reviewed by the state as part of the construction sequencing for erosion control.
And what's the plan on running the pumps?
Well, the de-watering pumps do typically run 24 hours, but they can use silent-type pumps that will have a very reduced decibel level so that the, it should not be a disturbance to the neighbors. We've actually had, I've had, experienced a situation where a construction site did have some noise problems, and some residents called, and they switched out the pumps, they were not using the quiet-type pumps, and once they were replaced, that was no longer a problem.
So they can use those, so the question is, Mr. Fox, will they use those? Because we.
Yes, we will.
Yes.
In the game of semantics, right, all things are possible, but we need to talk about what we're really going to do.
And I believe there's actually a county ordinance relating to construction noise that, that will require that.
Yes, they would have to meet the, the noise ordinance, the county's noise ordinance for construction.
So, just to summarize, the water's going to be, your, your stormwater system will be in place before any of the pumps are, or before any of the ponds are pumped?
Yes.
And all of the water will remain on-site and, and leave it as per the stormwater plan? The draft that you've got right now, plus, you're going to improve that as reality hits?
Correct.
I come back to a question if I could, Paul, on this, talking about adding possible pipes, roadways, paths, or anything else, what I've seen is some companies come in and they go, we need 18 inches of, you know, pipe, and they put three six-inch pipes, well, those are the ones that clog quickly.
The, no, the only place you'll see any kind of small diameter pipe on this will be as part of a drawdown orifice at the control structure to, to limit the drawdown time for this, but no, you won't see any small diameter pipes like that that would, would plug, there will be.
It's okay if you exceed, you know, the size, it's okay.
No, you, you shouldn't have any problems with pipes that would plug, honestly, there are going to be very few pipes installed on this site, we should have the control structure at the outlet, and other than that, there should be a pipe under the access path that comes on to the site. Any other piping installed would be restricting water only on our site, because it would be coming to take water that is collected within the solar field itself and route it under the access path into the storm drainage system that's around the perimeter.
And then going back to the ones that already are there under roads, have you guys looked at those pipes as a good neighbor policy to see if they are clogged in any way, to tell DOT or whoever else might want to come clean them out?
We did do extensive topographic survey work in the summer of 2016, I did have a couple of conversations with DOT, there are some problems with some of the culverts along, mostly towards the northern end of the site on Grandy Road. The other problem, the only other obvious drainage problem that we found, other than just a lack of any real drainage along Uncle Graham Road, is at Par 4 Drive, the drainage system on Par 4 is, is not adequate, there is a single pipe that brings water under Par 4 that was pretty much completely clogged at the time. Unfortunately, that is not a DOT street, so DOT can't assist with that, and really, the only water that runs through it is the lots on the eastern side of Par 4. So there, there is some work that needs to be done there, but it is off of our property, and really does not carry any water from our property.
Okay, but could you make those locations known to the county, either Mr. Will Creef or the soil and water folks, just so we can look at them?
Yes, certainly, and I, I would expect that through this review process, I'll be meeting with Eric Weatherly and Will Creef at some point, and, yeah, I'll be glad to point that out. And yeah, I'll be glad to point that out to them.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the applicants? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, I will open the public hearing. And again, the public hearing comments are restricted to three minutes. Red light means your time is up and I will ask you nicely to finish your time when your time is up. So with that, I will call David Rice. Mr. Rice, if you could state your name and address for the record, thank you.
I'm David Rice, I live at 257 Grandy Road. My house borders the fifth fairway of the Goose, Old Goose Creek Golf Course. During the storm of 2016, we had two back-to-back hurricanes. Every house that borders me had at least three foot of water in their backyard. It took two to three days for it to go down. One of the houses, the water's completely surrounded. The house on the far end was completely surrounded. The water came up to my third step on my deck. It didn't get under my house. But we had two back-to-back storms. Now, if you remove all the trees that's there now, you remove all the weeds that definitely hadn't been mowing for, been mowed down for three years like they're supposed to be, and you move, remove all the ponds, where's that water going? I don't care what these engineers say. I'm not a dummy. I've been around. I know what water can do. I just feel that Grandy is a community that's gonna be coming up in the future. If you take the most valuable piece of property that's in Grandy right now, that's undeveloped, and give them a 30-year lease, what happens to the solar farm after five years if it fails? That lease is still in effect. The only person that's making any profit on it is the person that owns the land. Now, I do understand, and I didn't get this letter, that this company that wants to build this thing sent letters out to everybody, offering them a lump sum of money or free electricity for so many years. Sort of, that's kinda like a bribe. And if people do take it and this thing's approved, they better beware, Internal Revenue Service will come after them for taking, getting this money because it's a gift. You don't get it for free. You don't get electricity for free. That's my concerns. It don't take a brain science to figure out, if you remove all the ponds, if you move all the trees and remove all the weeds that's there now, that that, it's nothing to hold back the water. Next point, it's gonna reduce our property value. I don't care what all these analysis says because they've never did an analysis on property that's got houses around it. I think the last meeting I was at, they said they did some kind of analysis on one and the closest house was a mile or two miles away from them, it was a farmhouse. There's tons of land in Grandy. If you go down Grandy Road, there's tons of farmland that I'm sure these farmers would love to sell. There wouldn't be a problem putting a solar farm on because they ain't making no money farming anyway. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. I will call John McCauley.
My name is John McCauley, I live at 236 Grandy Road. First, what I was going to say is not what I'm about to say because I was blissfully ignorant of the state of where we are today. As far as conditions go, Lori, do you have the documents that were submitted by Steve Fentress to Ben Woody?
They are in our records, they're in our files, yes.
Have they been considered? It was a rather extensive list of conditions that this board should heed as conditions for approval. That's all I'll say about that because I can't spout them verbatim. And unfortunately, Steve's no longer with us, so he can't do it either. And just to reiterate what my neighbor just said, I've been here for 10 years and I hear talk of a 10-year storm. I think I've seen three 100-year storms in 10 years. So, you know, the, the doubleheader, the Veterans Day, Noel Reaster, and there was one other one. So 10-year storm is, is not a benchmark that, that will float on Grandy Road. The last time that Ms. Hamby was in this forum, she admitted openly to issues with connectivity. And I'm going to assume that those issues have now been solved. To answer your question on volume, the big pond as calculated by Steve Fentress was 12 million gallons in that one body. The last thing I'm going to mention, and I don't believe it's been done, but given where we are, from a number of perspectives, we're on the flyaway. Migratory birds, waterfowl, sportsman's paradise here. And I don't believe anyone has considered the effect that this installation will have on migratory bird patterns. But it's been brought up now. Lastly, I get, it boggles my mind that an 80-acre mirror is in harmony with a neighborhood. It just boggles my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley. Would anyone else, else like to speak to this during public comment, during the public hearing? With that, I'll close the public hearing. If I, if I can, Ms. Hamby, if, if you can come back up, I have a question for you. Mr. McCauley spoke to a connectivity issue. Can you, can you discuss that at all?
I'm not sure what he's referring to, to be completely honest.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing. And I will open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, and I don't know the best way to go about this, but there, I think we have significant input that is gonna require revising what's in here from a motion perspective.
Some of the requirements.
Exactly. And I know we've been waiting on this and it's been a long time coming, but, you know, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure. Do we have to render a verdict or render an opinion this evening, Mr. McCree?
Yes, Superior Court did order that the board, well, I need to look, I need to look at the order real quick.
As, as, as he's looking for that, if, if I can reiterate what Mr. McCree said, this isn't an option that the Board of Commissioners has to approve or not approve this project. We have to, as a body, approve this project. All we can do is put limitations on what the project can be and what they have to do to conform. This is not an option for us approving or not approving. What we have to make sure is that everything that we are approving is satisfactory to protect the residents around that property. That's what, that's what our, that's what our task is here this evening. It isn't to approve or disapprove. By court order, we have to approve this project. What we have to approve, though, and the limitations on it are what we're discussing this evening.
And I'd just like to say, you know, Mr. Rice, you know, I agree, I mean, that, that's where I grew up in Grandy, I still live there. I've seen that flooding and I don't disagree with you. And I've seen it there. Unfortunately, the courts, right, have ordered us to, to approve this. We just gotta make sure the conditions are correct to protect the citizens and that we have the right ones in there. That's Commissioner Beaumont has said. And, and to Mr. McCauley, as we were sitting here tonight, I was thinking about, and the people that played that course in years remember all the geese that were going in that big pond right there. And I've seen that flooded with geese many times. And I just wonder now if that's gonna distract the migration or where they're gonna go and, but, you know, I guess the court's telling us we gotta let it go.
Mr. Chairman, our county engineer was not sworn in, but I have some questions that we can, if, if we may.
Mr. Weatherly, could you please come up and be sworn in?
Or does he have to be?
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Weatherly, I don't mean to catch you off guard, but the conversations and, and the questions that Mr. Rice brought up with the connectivity, are you familiar with what he's referring to with the outlets around this property or some of the flooding issues that, that we've identified previous?
I'm familiar with the flooding, but I'm not sure what he means by connectivity.
Okay, but.
Something to do with the street connecting to another subdivision or, no, it's not that. You ask him.
Could you speak briefly to the, the flooding issues that are already happening? If it's, in, in your opinion, as far as if there are issues that we are aware of?
We are aware of the flooding. It is difficult to, to stand here, we know there's flooding issues, but as a county, we don't have the authority to go in and fix those flooding situations. We, we try, Will Creef and myself, we, we try as county staff to work with the communities to offer our expertise, but for us to be able to go in and resolve those flooding problems, we, we don't have that authority. I would like to work with Kim if, as she's doing some of her analysis and certainly work with the community. If there's something that we can put the responsibility on somebody else, then we can certainly do that, like DOT. If, if there's some DOT streets and culverts, that's, that's, that's easy. If we can do that. If, if there's culverts in private areas that maybe we can identify to the property owners and say, "Look, it is your responsibility to go clean out this culvert." Sometimes just saying it gets it done. So maybe the community just wasn't aware of that. But as far as Ecoplex, we've tried to work with them and say, and first off, it is true, they are exempt from our stormwater regulations. The true exemption that they're under is they're developing less than 10% of that property. That's very clear in our UDO. So Ecoplex has come to us, their engineer, and said, "Look, we, we can assure you that we won't make it worse." And they've actually said to me that they're going to improve it in certain areas, but they can't give me those final numbers until they've done their survey and work and done the final modeling. So it's, it is difficult for me to stand here and say, "What do y'all do?" I assure you, we'll work with Ecoplex in every way we can. And I think Timmons Group had assured us that they'll work through us through the design, but it's, it's difficult for me to say we can make them do certain things.
Okay, so at, at this point in time, you're not aware of any DOT or any options of, of issues that we currently have that, that can be resolved outside of this property?
Uh, I'm not right now, but certainly I can work with the community and, and the, and the people who came up. I'll, I'll be glad to talk with them and meet with them and whatever we can.
I'm curious, it was brought up, and Ms. Hamby, I believe, mentioned the Par Four area. I'm not familiar with where that is on the property and if, if that backs up to the Uncle Graham Road or Grandy where this significant flooding is, is happening.
She's pointing at it. Do you see that?
Okay, so that's, and, and so the other areas that Mr. Rice was referring to is on the north side of that?
Yes.
Or is that?
Northeast.
Okay.
Generally, the western boundary of this whole track is what we're talking about. Grandy Road circles all the way around the western boundary and, and all of those areas have problems. And it, I'm gonna speak out of line, but it looks to me like, I've been looking at LiDAR maps and elevations and it looks like it's all supposed to go to the west. And maybe there's something under, I'm, I can feel the back of my head burning. Maybe there's something underneath Uncle Graham that we can look at, that, is there some drainage restrictions or something? But that's all I've got right now.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't aware of any, as a county, issues that are, are, you know, hindering that flow at this time.
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
People have talked about my mentioning connectivity, can I?
Yes, please come up, please do, please do. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to swear you in though, okay?
Sure.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
As I recall from that meeting, two point, three months or two and a half years ago, we, we have a situation right here that's going to cause outflow. It's gonna go to the North River, it's gonna go to the Sound. But in order to get there, it has to cross a lot of private property. Thus, the problems with connectivity because the agreements weren't in place to go onto private land to dig ditches, clear ditches, or anything else. And those are the issues that Ms. Hamby said were gonna be, I don't wanna say formidable, but they, they, they had to be overcome.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Hamby, can you please come back up? All right. Anything to add to that?
The only thing I can think of is that maybe in relation to solving all of the drainage problems, where we will connect to be able to discharge our locations where the drainage system on the golf course already interconnects. We won't be creating any new connections to any downstream ditches or doing any off-site work. All of the new ponds we'll dig, all the new ditches that we'll dig will be within the 300-foot buffer areas provided on this site.
And if I can, to, to, to Mr., to Mr. Rice's concern about the flooding, it currently floods there now.
It, it does.
With nothing happening. And your assurance, your assurances are that it won't get worse?
We will not make it worse. Where possible, we are providing some relief.
Okay.
You know of a possible restriction, you'll be telling Mr. Weatherly?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the, the Superior Court's order was, was entered on March 26, 2018, giving the county three months in which to conform with the decision of the Court of Appeals to issue this permit. So this is your last regular meeting before that time period would expire.
Thank you, Mr. McCree. Mr. Smith, you wanted to say something? Come on up.
Yes.
If you, if you can, what, if you can, Mr. Smith, come on and get sworn in, if you would, I appreciate it. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
In listening to these conversations, I see one thing that was completely missed. And that is that solar arrays have not been allowed to be put near airports because they disrupt the flight patterns of birds. And the birds suddenly are flying into the flight patterns of the aircraft. And we've seen what catastrophic issues have happened there. We are on the flight path, the Interstate 95 of migratory waterfowl. This solar array, the position that it's in, could very well disrupt the flight path of migratory birds. And as you are well aware, in the county, waterfowl hunting is a number-one industry to the county. And it's an issue that should be addressed, at least studied before you allow this to go forward. And it was missed in the court system. It's not been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any further discussions?
I think we could ask the applicant. If the applicant's willing to let us vote on this at our next meeting, is that allowed? I mean, even if the courts of both parties are agreeing to it?
So we can have a proper motion?
So we have a proper motion put forward? What we've done in the past is asked staff to prepare a motion for us to get all the legalese in there and then bring it back to, bring it back and approve it at the next meeting. And so that's where we're at tonight because there's, it's such a dynamic motion.
Right, I, I understand entirely and I appreciate the good intentions. I actually do a whole lot of this in terms of, I do land use and zoning, that is my primary practice. I've probably done this in 60 counties and maybe 50 municipalities. And in the big scheme of things, this is actually not that complicated a motion. I mean, I, I go in all the time where, you know, there, there are things thrown out that we've never heard of before and we work it out, you know, that night, so. So it would certainly be, you know, our preference. I think you've got a great starting point, you know, we've agreed with everything your staff has said. And to my knowledge, the only thing you've got to add are the, the new conditions on the, on the hours of operation on the, the pile driving. And then the issue about the quiet pumps, those were new as of tonight. And then we had asked for consideration in regards to if you change the, your, if you change your LDO to allow, to not require the groundwater monitoring. I think that's really the only things that are different from what your staff has, have suggested, along with our recommendation on how we word the condition on the groundwater. And so I think that's pretty straightforward. And if we were to, if, if we were to have, we would have to go jointly, go back to the court, schedule a time to get in front of them, to ask them if they, if the court would allow us to extend this time. And I don't even know that we could do that by June 26.
Mr. Fox, not to cut you off, but I believe we're prepared to make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Again, let me reiterate for the last time, this is not something we have a choice in doing. This is something we are compelled by the courts to do. It is not this board's option to approve or disapprove this project. It is our charge to make sure that the residents around it are protected and that no harm would come to their properties, any more so than what is currently happening. And I'm very confident that the staff will be monitoring this and in good faith with the residents. And that's where we are at this point. So again, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, and y'all are gonna just have to bear with me, 'cause I'm gonna talk real slow. I move to approve PB 1807, Kurutuk Sunshine Farms' use permit, because the applicant has demonstrated the proposed use meets the Use Permit Review Standards of the UDO. Specifically, the use will not endanger the public safety or public health because security fencing will surround the site. The panels are rated to 150 miles per hour wind speeds. The racking system will be engineered to withstand a minimum of 120 miles per hour, three-second wind gust. And the panels used will comply with, and all construction will comply with UL 1703 Safety Certification, which is required for the panels. The use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located because Ecoplex has commissioned a licensed real estate appraiser that performed a number of matched pair analyses for its solar developments in North Carolina. None of the analyses produced any evidence of deleterious impacts on property values due to the presence of the solar facility. The use is in conformity with the following policies of the 2006 Land Use Plans, Land Use Plan Plans. In specifically, Policy ID 1, provide industrial development opportunities for cluster industries identified by Kurutuk Economic Development, such as defense, aerospace, port and maritime-related industries, alternative energy, agriculture and food, and local existing business support. And finally, the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities in that the use will not create any burden on public facilities and will have no impact on schools. With the additional language based upon county's staff's recommendation, specifically 300-foot setback from residential zone use and 100-foot setback from all other property lines, maximum fixture height of anything on the site to be 15 feet. Screening will be Type D at residential zone use property lines and Type C at all other property lines to be in place prior to construction. Unwanted vegetation and weeds will be 24-inch maximum height. Groundwater monitoring wells will be as per the UDO standards that were in effect on April 4, 2016. Let's see.
Add silent pumps, sir.
Decommissioning performance guarantee will be required at 115% salvage value to be renewed every other year, also as per the UDO that was in effect at the time of this original application. Construction activity will be from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday, during, pile, well, during post-driving. And the construction would be requested to remain within that time window as much as possible. During the de-watering and for stormwater control, stormwater constraint features to be installed prior to the evacuation of water from the ponds within the facility, that quiet pumps would be used as brought up by Ecoplex's engineer to be used during the de-watering. No chemicals would be used to control vegetative growth on the property throughout the life of the project.
Would it be feasible to add, Commissioner Bum, like that, the accessibility of the site will just be off of 158, not, not off, no accessibility off Uncle Graham Road or Grandy Road?
Yes, I think that's.
That's in there? Okay, that's, that's in there. Okay, I just want to add, and hear that discussed, I just wanna make sure that was still, okay.
I think we had requested that the construction, the construction entrance be off 158, but the permanent entrance be off Grandy Road, which the permanent.
Permanent entrance would only be a maintenance entrance for people to come mow grass or replace.
So it won't be used during construction?
It would not be used for construction. Okay, so, and, but that's per the plan, so.
Okay. Because I just thought, remember last time, we just got, years ago?
I know.
Well, I think you wanted to preserve the frontage of the property for possible commercial use. So if you've got main entrance there, that, that defeats anything else.
Already got.
Got that, okay.
Got that, I think you covered.
If I could, point of order real quick. And maybe it's me, at the top of page 39, it says PB 1807. Then it talks about this being PB 1714, and we're talking about PB 1525. I just wanna make sure they all kinda, we're talking about the same thing when we talk about this. Notice that, like I say, page 39, it talks about PB 1807. Then right on it, suggested motion for approval, PB 1714, but we're talking about PB 1525. Maybe these numbers all mean.
On the, on the agenda, it's 1525.
And I'm just, and in the front of it, at the first part.
I, I, I see exactly what you're talking about.
I just wanna make sure we're talking about.
What's our correct PB number?
It would be the original 1525.
Okay, so to amend my motion to, to state PB 1525.
Thank you for that, Mr. Hall.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion passes unanimously. Again, I'll just give a minute for the room to clear out, if they wanna leave. Thank y'all for your patience. Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on, consideration and action PB 18-09 Muddy Acres, request for preliminary plat use permit for a Type 2 five-lot major conservation subdivision on 13.33 acres located on Tolls Creek Road, tax map 14 parcel 18H Moyoc Township. If I could have anyone that's gonna speak to this item come be sworn in, please.
Coming up, Mr. Chairman, there was a question, I think, while we continued it in reference to Mr. Taber's property. Is that what we're pretty much working on tonight?
They'll discuss that.
Do I need to be sworn in?
Are you going to do a public hearing?
Yes.
You don't need to be sworn in. If you could please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. LaCicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sir, if you can have a seat for now. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a continuation from a May meeting for a Type 2 five-lot major subdivision on Tolls Creek Road. The reason you are hearing this, typically, a five-lot subdivision would not come before you, but due to the fact that the parent parcel has been subdivided so many times, this kicks it into the use permit process. It is a 13-acre tract near, off of, off of Tolls Creek Road, just east of Panther Landing Road. It's currently vacant, farmland and woodland. It is adjacent to Dustin Lane and Waterley subdivision. And, and these two properties right here are Foxglove Acres that were approved earlier this spring. It is zoned ag, and it is adjacent to conditional, single-family mainland, other ag zoning, and single-family, regular, single-family mainland. It is classified rule in the 2006 Land Use Plan and limited service in the Moyoc Small Area Plan. So here is a diagram of the, of the subdivision. It is a five-acre, I mean, sorry, five-lot subdivision. And they are going to have eight acres, out of 13 acres, they're gonna put eight acres in open space. Five of these acres are here to the rear of the property that are considered wetlands. So this, the theme of what they are conserving with this subdivision are wetlands. There are three open space areas. The first area is the, is where the BMP, Stormwater Best Management Practice, they're gonna have a pond here, open space along the road, and in the back where the wetlands are. They will be on public water, they will have septic tanks. And there's also a 25-foot street buffer along the front and a 50-foot wetland buffer. There will be the park, there will be a park payment in lieu of $1,238.65. And they will be required to meet all the requirements of the stormwater, of the county's stormwater manual. They do have a low connectivity score, but as you could see from the earlier map, these were a series of 10-acre exempt lots that were cut out and have been since recombined to create all these subdivisions that are coming off of Tolls Creek Road. So they do have a low connectivity score, but that, with the current layout, lot layout, that's very hard to, for them to improve on. So in a use permit, there do have to be findings of fact, and the applicant can speak to their findings of fact. And let me go over staff's findings of fact, that the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans. The proposed subdivision is in general conformity with the land use plan and the current UDO. The proposed subdivision will be held to the UDO standards for layout, screening, and other requirements. The Moyoc Small Area Plan classifies this site as limited service on the future land use map. And the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, including, but not limited to, schools, fire and rescue, law enforcement, and other county facilities. The preliminary staff findings for that, the utility services are available to the site, and onsite wastewater disposable will be designed and permitted in accordance with the state rules and standards. The location of the proposed subdivision is already within defined school, fire, and rescue and law enforcement areas. The proposed subdivision layout is designed to conform with the North Carolina Fire Code along with the county's fire, the county fire officials' preferred hydrant location and equipment reaches. The proposed subdivision will not exceed the county's ability to provide public, adequate public facilities. The student generation rate, this subdivision will only generate one elementary school student. And we are under the 85% capacity for all of our schools. The elementary school for the northern part of the county is at 83% capacity. The middle school for the entire county, 78%, and the high school for the entire county is 80%. The technical, the technical review committee did recommend approval of, of, of this subdivision. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I have one question, maybe two. During the last meeting, we had an issue with drainage. We weren't sure if they had met that requirement. That was, I think, part of the reason that we, we tabled this to this meeting.
Yes.
Do we know if that's been addressed, or would that be for the applicant?
That would be for the applicant. They did submit, that was in part of your packet, they did submit a appraisal report. And they can speak to that as well today. And, and the engineers here to, to speak to the drainage issue.
Okay. Any further questions for Ms. LaCicero? If I could have the first applicant come up and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brad Smith, I'm with Landmark Custom Homes, I own the property and I'm the primary applicant. I'd have Mr. Kim Tate, we hired him. My understanding when we left the last time was, really, it came down to the motion was not about drainage, 'cause that generally comes in the construction phase, it was more about the property value question as well came up. There was questions and discussion about drainage throughout the process, but we don't do the stormwater permits, obviously, until we get beyond, beyond this phase. The, I do have, you have an appraisal report in your packet, and I could answer any questions, along with my engineer, on drainage issues or concerns that you have outside of the permit process.
Okay, thank you. I just recall in our conversations, back and forth with Mr. Taber, about a drainage issue, the maintenance of the pond.
Well, he asked about the maintenance of the pond, but all of that is standard part of, you know, cut, cutting the grass and those kind of things. I mean, there's no, the, the issue that Mr. Taber brought up had to do with his personal septic and that he had some gurgling after the Dustin Lane neighborhood went in. That, that's where most of that went in.
And if you wanted to cut the grass, you guys didn't have a problem with it?
No, I don't have a problem with him cutting the grass, that's never been an issue.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just remembered that conversation.
And you're absolutely right, that did come up, but I think it was more about the, the impact of the, the potential property value, 'cause you guys asked us to, to bring an expert back to evaluate that.
Correct, and I had requested that, and, and part of that was due to the pond being directly behind his property and the adjoining property, how the drainage into that pond that you have on your property would affect. That, that's the big thing is, is, you know, the water that's gonna be collecting, how that would affect, like I said, the surrounding homes.
And I'll let Mr., I'll let those two speak to any particular questions you've got there. I mean, the drainage, the engineers have, to where that will not pose any problems to any other properties or anything, just like is required of every other neighborhood that, that is done. And Mr. Tate did the evaluation in, in reference to how property values may be affected.
And, and as far as the maintenance of this pond, is that gonna be a responsibility of the homeowners? You as a developer, if Mr. Taber, you know, moves away, and, and, you know, who's gonna be left to maintain and?
Ultimately, it will become the homeowner, there'll be a small homeowners association, like most typical neighborhoods, throughout.
Okay, so that will be part of their covenants?
Yes, ma'am.
To maintain that pond?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I mean, is there any kind of preventative that you can install? I know in some of the other developments throughout the county, and especially in Moyoc, they've got experts that, that maintain the ponds, 'cause this is a fairly large pond, in my opinion.
And it is a good-sized pond, but I, I think what a couple of things that are being left out here is, he, his concern had to do with the growth and the snakes and that kind of stuff. The property across the street here is swamped. The property across the street here is swamp tree land. The property behind it's agricultural, that's had soybeans and crops and everything else that have grown on it for the last 15 years. The little bit of growth that's going to come around that pond is not going to bring anything or any different than what's already growing there. Now, when you put a neighborhood in, obviously, there will be covenants, just like everywhere else, where, you know, it's going to be maintained better as a residential neighborhood than it is agricultural. If you look at everything that the county's already approved around it, Dustin Acres, and I forget what the one to the left of me is, they're already residential properties. They all have ponds on them. There are already maintenance structures in place. These are smaller neighborhoods by nature, because this parcel was not sold as one piece. For a five-lot subdivision, no, we have not hired experts to come in and tell you the best way to maintain that pond. Typically, we wouldn't even see you on this.
Someone that, a professional opinion to how to keep and maintain the ponds. I mean, since our last meeting, I've driven around and looked at lots of developments, especially in the Moyoc area, and how the ponds are being maintained. And at each development stage that I've gone through and witnessed, there's probably 10 different maintenance, or lack of, on some of these ponds. And I'm just concerned with this being, you know, a five-home, you know, very small homeowners, how they would be able to maintain that pond.
To answer that question, we will put covenants in place, and as part of the process, there'll be a small homeowner's fee that will be collected each month for the maintenance of those kind of things. Really, the pond and the little bit of stuff down the side is really all that this little neighborhood's going to require maintenance for, because the rest of it, as they said earlier, is all wetland. So the only thing that they're really going to have to keep up with would be the small pond there and a little bit of roadside maintenance across the street. Everything else is pretty straightforward, so we will take care of that in terms of the covenants, the homeowner's responsibilities, and some sort of small homeowner's fee that would cover the costs that that would encumber.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And with that, could we call the appraiser up?
Yes, sir.
Is that Mr. Tate?
I'm Kim Tate. I live at 1093 Waterlily Road. When Brad approached me about this, he asked me to take a look at it. Evidently, it was brought up to him that he needed some type of verification or study about what kind of impact the development would have adjacent to this property. I know there's a pond behind it, but the pond appears to be, from looking at the plat, set off somewhat from him. I don't know the exact size of this pond. So what we did is we went to other developments that were being developed behind existing residential property, looked for properties that had sold and resold during the planning time and during the development phases of these other projects. That's what we focused on, the impact of adjacent development to existing properties. We named four or five in here that we went to. Some of them are adjacent to or but more intense developments. Waterly, for one, the Gables, which is an impending project that's coming up off of Guinea Road. The other one is Brumsey Woods, which backs up to properties on Tolls Creek Road, very much like the one we're speaking of backs up to this proposed development. As you can see from, I don't need to go through each one, as you can see, they've sold and resold during the timeframe. The appreciation rate on those was positive as compared to just looking at the general appreciation rate of all properties in Currituck County. We did throw out waterfront properties, because that tends to skew things, but we stayed away from waterfront properties. And if you look at that, you'll see the general appreciation rate has been running 3% to 5% on properties overall. These percentages bracket the same thing. And in some cases, particularly on the one on Guinea Road where there was a small conservation neighborhood, the Mary Braxton Development, that was actually cut out. A house had been built. It sold twice, resold again. Even once property had been built right up adjacent to it, that's also adjacent to a small pond that's part of that conservation neighborhood, and it had a strong appreciation rate. My findings were that I found, particularly a development of this size proposed in this fashion, I didn't see an impact, a negative impact on the marketability of the property. That being said, I went back to local brokers in the area that's spread out through Currituck County, did phone interviews with about eight brokers to have conversations about this, about the situation in general, this property in particular, the impact. Most, all the brokers unanimously said that it would not have had a negative impact on the marketability of the property. In addition to that, their feeling was if there was a higher pricing segment property that was going in adjacent to existing properties, it tended to elevate the marketability of that property along with the rest of the neighborhood. The third thing that we considered is we just kind of looked at the value of property that's adjacent to developing subdivisions as it's growing through its life cycle, starting out from ground, going on, and that was Holly Ridge. And it's adjacent to where they're doing infrastructure work there on the Gables subdivision. And that's shown a steady stabilized rate of value going up, appreciation during the timeframe that's been going on. The last thing is that this property, somebody could have bought this property just as an ag piece and chose to dig a pond on it, given the way that the zoning is and the use. You're not really having a change in use. It's conforming with everything there. It could have been kept as one single property. Somebody could have dug a pond on it, and they could have done more of a farm-type use on it where they could have parked anything. And, I mean, certainly, they would have to fall in compliance with county ordinances, but given the opportunity, I think this project is probably a better neighbor than something that might go in there, given all considerations.
Thank you for an expert recommendation and opinion.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Tate? Thank you, Mr. Tate. If we could call the engineer?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Dylan Tillitt. I'm an engineer with Qualibone Associates. What we've talked about tonight so far is, you bring up the drainage concerns. I think, as Mr. Smith stated, the major drainage concerns that we talked about last month was the pond, the growth around that. I don't believe, what I do know is, we also talked about, you know, the gurgling of the neighbor's septic. When we started designing this subdivision in the beginning, we were trying to maximize lots. This was before we realized that there was wetlands in the back. We were starting with an eight-lot subdivision. We applied for onsite wastewater site evaluations with Almaral Regional Health Services as a requirement to submit for preliminary plat. All of the lots were, we were told, are results from the wastewater evaluation. We were told to, what would be required was removing four and a half feet of the soil, existing soil, replace with clean sand, and also fill 12 inches. However, there was one lot that was right up front that was deemed unsuitable and denied wastewater from Almaral Regional Health. And that is the lot, that location was right behind Mr. Taber's property. We don't, and we can't speak to how the Mr. Taber's septic was installed, but there is reason to believe that that area has unsuitable soils as per our evaluations from Almaral Regional Health. And it's, that lot that was deemed unsuitable is now a different lot number, but it was close to Lot 1. I'm sorry, it was close to, it was in the stormwater pond for the subdivision that you have in front of you, which is the area right behind Mr. Taber's property. I think the drainage concerns, you know, that addresses the concerns that we've heard with drainage. Other than that, the pond will be following, you know, Currituck County's stormwater manual. We will be releasing only the two-year storm during the 10-year post-development. So up to the 10-year storm, less runoff is leaving this property. If anything, we are helping the drainage.
Thank you, Mr. Tillitt. Any questions for Mr. Tillitt? Would anyone else like to give any testimony? At this time, I open the public hearing, and I would call Cameron Taber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Cameron Taber, 608 Tolls Creek Road. I spoke last time. I don't, did not get a professional opinion about my septic. I just know that prior to the houses that were there before, I didn't have a septic issue. Haven't had one in a while, despite all this rain, but occasionally I do, and didn't have them before. And that's just a fact, and I want to share that fact. If this board should see fit to approve this project, I am concerned about the pond. He spoke of having a homeowners association, and that's all well and fine, but if, in fact, this board should see fit to pass this project, for him to say he's going to do it now and not be put in the approval process would not be what I'm talking about as an adjacent homeowner. Again, I don't know what to say about the septic. I just know that, and I have an old septic system. My house was built in the 60s. It's a great house, but, and I'm not going to, it's not new, but it does work. Works great. But it did not work real well after these new houses were built. And if you have any questions from me, or should I make myself more clear over the pond? Or should, where are we, Mr. Chairman?
We're here in Currituck.
And glad to be here.
I don't have any further questions. If that's your statement, that's fine. Thank you.
Anyone?
And I would believe that if a motion is put forward, that in the covenants, it would say something about the pond? And the maintenance of the pond?
About it being mowed around it and of that nature. And we all know, we live in Currituck County, what happens to ponds that aren't mowed around. I mean, it becomes...
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Taber. Would anyone else like to speak during the public hearing section? With that, I will close the public hearing, and I will open the floor for a motion or discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve PP 1809 with the staff recommendations that will not, the project will not endanger the public health and safety. It is a residential, single-family dwelling subdivision consisting of .08 acre lots. It will not injure the value of the adjoining or budding lands and will be in harmony with the area in which is located, because the surrounding properties are largely used for single-family dwellings and agriculture, and the appraisals are included in our package. It is in conformity with the land use plan, because it's located in the fastest-growing area of the county that continues to evolve as a full-service community under the Moyoc Small Area Plan. It will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, because public water is available at the site, and it consists of only five lots, which will generate a minimal impact on the county schools, as indicated. And I would also add that the pond maintenance be maintained by the developer until the homeowners' covenants are, or the homeowners' association takes over, and that the pond maintenance be included in those covenants.
Would that, would there be a fee involved in that, in your motion?
Whatever it is to maintain that pond.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. We have a motion?
I'll say it.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion passed unanimously. If anyone would like to leave, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next one, or?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business. Samantha Hurt from our DSS has been kind enough to come and talk to us about something that needs discussion with the board and to make us all aware of what's going on. So thank you for coming and sitting here for so long.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioner members. I was asked to come here by Mr. Scanlon to talk with you about, you should have a packet of information in front of you. The title of that is Memorandum of Agreement between Department of Health and Human Services and Currituck County Department of Social Services. And it's a lengthy document, but just wanted to sort of summarize a few points for you, because the document does require a signature before the end of the month. This memorandum of understanding was developed as a part of a new law that became effective recently regarding the House Bill 630. You may have heard some conversation about that. What this memorandum of agreement does is require some performance requirements and administrative responsibilities that are now in the form of writing with the Department of Social Services and the state. DHHS is the entity that supervises local counties in the administration of social services programs. The DSS services that are pursuant to the agreement are not new. They've always been policy largely, so they're not a surprise to us in any way. However, the threshold of compliance for those performance measures are substantially high. And some of the areas that, and you'll see in the agreement, if you flip sort of towards the back pages, you'll see some categories and some charts there, and most of those categories have a 95% threshold. So that is the concern, because some of those are unrealistic in many ways, and that's the part that I want to summarize for you this evening. And the main reason I think that I'm here is because it's sort of unusual for the county to enter into an agreement where there's some concern at the onset regarding compliance. And I certainly don't want to represent to this board or to Mr. Scanlon that my agency can absolutely meet all of those very high thresholds in the benchmark every single time, because there are some unusual variables that have to be taken into consideration. In summarizing some of the concerns, largely, it relates to child protective services and foster care. So one example is in child protective services, there's a 95% threshold of initiating new investigations that come into the agency. So any allegations of abuse or neglect that we receive and that meet the statutory requirement for screening in, you have three options. You can investigate it immediately, you can do it within 24 hours, or you can do it within 72 hours. And we do that consistently. We have very good social work practice at our agency. However, there are some things that are beyond our control. So when we're trying to initiate that investigation, sometimes we can't locate children. Sometimes we don't have adequate demographic information. We don't have an address. And so if we've screened it in for an immediate response, and we've worked all day, half of the evening, trying to find and locate, and we still can't, we're still making diligent efforts, but we've not met that threshold. So that's a concern. Sometimes children are located out of the state or out of the county, and that requires some collaboration with that entity. And sometimes there are some failures, if you will, to meet those standards, even upon request. Not often, but it does happen. And why that is a problem is because that would be a consequence for our agency, even though we're asking for help from someone else. Historically and presently, when the state comes out and monitors our programming, we don't always meet those benchmarks, but then when they look at the record, they see those diligent efforts. They see that the social worker tried all day and all the things that they've gone through to try and make that initiation. And there's not a negative consequence on the record, because they see that documentation. It would be impossible to meet that standard every single time with every single case. With this memorandum of understanding, I understand that they will be pooling some data from some reports. So that onsite monitoring piece, I'm not sure where that would factor in here, and historically, it always has. The next area, as an example, is with regard to foster care. So it states in the agreement that the county will provide leadership for ensuring 41% of children who enter foster care in the 12-month period are discharged to permanency within 12 months. So what that means is when a child comes into care, our agency is driven by policy and mandate for that child to achieve permanency within 12 months. They shouldn't be languishing in foster care. Everyone agrees that that's a best practice and a policy. However, again, like the other scenario I gave, there's many variables that are sort of beyond our control. that are sort of beyond our control that are also really good social work practice. So, for instance, we have some children that enter into care have significant mental health difficulties. Those children are very difficult to place, they have very high needs. It's sort of unrealistic to imagine that they would achieve permanence in a home where our case can be closed and everyone can move on within 12 months. Sometimes it takes 12 months just to get that child stable. We have to work with mental health providers and entities such as Trillium to approve the authorization of care for those children, and that takes time. It's not immediate. So, there's a lot of barriers there, and it's very complex. The other situation regarding permanence is adoptions. Some children become legally free for adoption, and that always exceeds 12 months. I can't remember any case where that was done within a 12-month period because there's so many legal proceedings. Parents have constitutionally protected parental rights. There are termination of parental rights hearings that take place, and that always takes, in my opinion, outside of a 12-month period. So, just sort of given that overview, I've talked with Mr. Scanlon and Mr. McCree about this a few times. And this is something that is now required by the Department of Health and Human Services. It's recommended by the Directors Association for DSS Directors that directors and county managers sign this together. I'm sure Mr. McCree will talk some more about the legal implications. But it's due by the end of the month. It's another compliance measure by the state, and my understanding is it will be completed on an annual basis.
You made the comment, maybe I caught it, was on mental health?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything, I know most of the places are not around here. Is there anything we can do to help you in that respect?
That's a very good point. Most of the treatment facilities and resources are out of the county. So, when we're looking at placing children for treatment, if they need a facility level of treatment, that's always outside and usually a couple of hours away. If you could open a facility here, have some different counseling resources, that would be a huge advantage for the county.
And typically, the providers focus where the largest needs are.
And we're not it.
Of course, they don't know this board very well.
Appreciate your time.
Any further questions for Ms. Hurd? Thank you. Mr. McCree, would you like to elaborate on any?
Well, I'll just say that this was actually a statute adopted by the General Assembly last year requiring counties to enter into these agreements with the Department of Health and Human Services. As an instance of when you really don't have a choice by law. We did explore, and I've talked with attorneys at the North County Commissioners Association to express Currituck County's concern. As you heard the director state, you're about to enter into an agreement that we're not real sure that we can comply with. And we're not the only county that finds itself in this predicament. We've, we're hearing that maybe some counties were even considering refusing to sign. Again, in conversation with the North County Commissioners Association, it was suggested that while they maybe were hearing some of that same talk, that the repercussions from the General Assembly, if counties refuse to execute this agreement in accordance with statutory requirement, might be more detrimental to counties in the long run than trying to work through this memorandum of understanding with the Department of Health and Human Services to come to a better understanding as to the relationship between counties, the state, and the General Assembly. There have been evidently some various drafts of this agreement to get to the point that is before you now. One of the earlier drafts, for example, would call for the county to lose certain funding if it didn't meet some of these parameters. That evidently has been modified, so now that there is a call within the document first for a corrective action plan to be entered into between a county that does not meet the parameters and the Department of Health and Human Services. Some of the concern that we've had is that here they are requiring counties in this county in particular to enter into an agreement where we have to rely upon the actions or inaction of others in order to comply. And I was using with the chairman earlier today, an example of how almost ridiculous this becomes when, on the one hand, the General Assembly is proposing in a possible judicial redistricting plan to cause this seven-county judicial district to lose one of five district court judges. Well, the district court is the court that hears all the juvenile cases and that we have to rely upon to have timely and regular court sessions in order to meet many of these parameters. So, on the one hand, you got the General Assembly that's proposing possibly have taken away one of our judges and hamstringing our ability even more to meet, on the other hand, parameters that they're requiring us to meet within this agreement. But again, talking with the County Commissioners Association, it seems like the best course of action, and of course, we want to comply with law, is to comply with the law and to work with a state agency or state department that we are understanding also sees a difficulty with this type of arrangement with counties, that this is a state agency that really does not have any intention or desire to actually come in and take over the operation of 100 counties or Department of Social Services agencies. And what we are proposing for you tonight to consider is also in front of you, and this is something that came out of Camden County, but we think is a good idea, is basically a signing statement in which you would adopt a resolution making certain findings about how this has not been done in accordance with a regular contracting process where you have two willing parties that enter into an agreement with terms that they all have, they all agree upon. And some other provisions, it talks about how the Department of Health and Human Services is supposed to interact with counties pursuant to statute and how this is out of step with that regular understanding and practice over the years of counties and the state working together in human services. So, bottom line is reluctantly recommend that you vote to authorize the county manager and the DSS director to sign this memorandum of understanding with the help of Currituck County. And by adoption of this resolution, you will be giving them that authority as well as providing that this extra language be added to the document so that there is at least a record going forward that Currituck County had a number of concerns that it was expressing at the time that it was forced to sign the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. McCree. Any further discussion or questions for Ms. Hurd or Mr. McCree? Thank you, Ms. Hurd.
Thank you.
Not for her.
Yes, sir.
It escapes me how, I guess my first question is, did we know this was coming? Was there time to influence, you know, requirements levied upon the county that we can't meet? You know, here we are basically at, you know, 11:35, and as you suggested, we're being basically strong-armed into signing something that we can't comply with.
It was something that was apparently adopted last year during the General Assembly. It started out as something different. Senator Tamara Behringer, as I understand it, had some concerns, particularly with regard to her home county, Guilford County's DSS, and some issues that were going on there with a child protective service matter. It somehow evolved from a proposal to regionalize social service agencies so that each county would no longer have its own Department of Social Services, but would be, I think they're going to split the state up into three regions. And so, there would be like a hub, that there'd be one central DSS agency basically providing services for a number of counties within a geographical region of the state. This, I think, as we understand it, may well be, and Samantha, correct me if I'm wrong, may well be, had been part of a compromise to stop that from proceeding forward, but to cause the General Assembly to be, to accept that there indeed was going to be something done to address what it perceived to be some deficiencies in some counties and the manner in which they were providing social services, particularly in the child protective services area. So, there have been evidently ongoing conversation and negotiations between the Social Service Directors Association and the State Department of Health and Human Services, as well as the County Commissioners Association, understand having some input that at least has gotten it from a document that called for the state coming in to take over an agency and removing your funding for social services if you couldn't meet the parameters to at least allowing now for a corrective action plan. I mean, your point is well-taken. The other part in this resolution would points out that each county is supposed to be kind of looked upon as its own entity and recognizing its demographics and its needs and development of metrics or parameters that it's supposed to meet. But this is a one-size-fits-all. Every county is being required to meet these same standards, at least in this first year of this agreement, without any customization or modification allowed by the department.
What are the ramifications if we don't agree to it?
Well, if Currituck doesn't, that's an interesting question. I mean, does the Department of Health and Human Services then come in and take over Currituck County Department of Social Services in its operation? Does the Department of Health and Human Services file suit against Currituck County seeking a, what would be called a writ of mandamus? A court order requiring the Board of Commissioners to enter into this agreement as provided by law?
They would never do that.
But it is my understanding that DHHS doesn't want to come in and take over Currituck County's...
I mean, I think what we're understanding is they certainly, if counties aren't able to meet parameters, they certainly don't have any appetite, we're hearing, to come in and have to take over the operation of a number of counties, Departments of Social Services.
I just, you know, us willingly signing a document that we can't comply with, as forced down our throat by our legislature, we should get that fixed.
We've got to do something about that legislation.
Yeah, we should.
But this...
Here shortly.
This is something that the association has been working on. As our director said, when it first came out, it looked a whole lot worse than this. And with the help of the County Commissioners Association and working with the directors, because they were going to technically come in and take over our social service. And so, this is an agreement that's been met with several of the people having discussions and working diligently. And I know it's something that we feel like they're forcing down our throat, but this is a whole lot better than what it started out as.
Oh, that makes, that's great, and I get it.
It's a whole lot better than what it was.
So, the kicker of the ball, it only took half the money out. And we've got to redo this every year.
It's a requirement of every year so long as the statute's in place. I guess another, only other positive perhaps aspect of it is if you're required to prepare a corrective action plan and explain why you didn't meet certain parameters, at least it appears that you have the opportunity to explain that you may not well have not met a parameter because of the inaction or inability or failure of a court system or some other agency or entity upon which you have to rely. And at least, again, as I was talking to the attorneys at the County Commissioners Association, they believe that, you know, I guess what they're understanding, that the department certainly is not and could not hold a county accountable in that instance for failing to reach a parameter.
It's bad government.
Any further questions? With that, I'll open the floor for a motion.
I make the motion that we approve the memorandum, or have the county manager and the director sign the memorandum of understanding between North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and Currituck County, and that we also pass the resolution regarding House Bill 630, required agreement between North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and Currituck County Department of Social Services.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
We have five yays and two nays. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Hurd. Moving on to new business, more new business, consideration action. Is the applicant here?
I don't believe he is.
This is an extension.
It's an extension.
Okay, okay. Just curious if the applicant was here. Consideration in action, PB 15-09, TW's Field, a request for a two-year extension of the preliminary plat use permit for a conservation subdivision consisting of 13 residential lots located on North Currituck Road in Currituck. With that, I'll hand it over to Ms. LoCicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In June 30th of 2016, the Technical Review Committee approved a preliminary plat for TW Fields. This is a conservation subdivision consisting of 13 residential lots located on North Currituck Road in Currituck. And that preliminary plat is due to expire at the end of this month. At the end of May, William Brumsey III, developer, submitted a request for preliminary plat extension, and Mr. Brumsey is requesting a 24-month preliminary plat, 24-month extension. In accordance with our UDO, the Board of Commissioners may grant a two-year extension of a preliminary plat one time for a good cause. And this is typically done without much fanfare, a preliminary plat extension.
What is his reason?
He didn't include it in the letter, so I'm not exactly sure.
So, it's for good cause, but we don't know the cause?
Yes.
Is that correct?
So...
Like, well, we just pay us.
Right. Well, you know, we're on a roll. Thank you, Ms. LoCicero. Any further questions for Ms. LoCicero? Before I open the floor for motion, I would like to see a reason.
Can we, can we put this off so we have a reason associated with this?
I would say, because why, we're still within the timeframe.
I would say, yeah, I would like to understand the reasoning.
Well, and I would like, just to make a comment. Mr. McCree, do we have to do the 24-month? Or can we do a, you know, 12-month? I mean, because the only thing, he would have to go through the applicant process again.
It's depending upon what the language in the order is. I don't know that it requires a, does it require a full 24 months? Or provide, I guess it provides, well, that's the question.
One time or?
It is, it is a one-time extension.
Yeah, so...
Up to 24 months?
One time, and only going to give 12 months.
I'd like to continue to hear a reason.
But his permit will expire June 30th, which he would have to start the process again. So, with that being said, we have made, we have made extensions in the past. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we extend this preliminary plat for TW's Field for 24 months.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Could we ask still, though, for him to provide his reasoning for this board so we'll have it adopted?
We'll find some note, I'll find out, I'll find something out.
He's sitting here to call if he wanted to know anything.
We have a motion in a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Do we want to take a break or want to keep pressing on?
Let's roll.
Let's roll, okay. Moving on to more new business, consideration of resolution authorizing the retention of legal counsel to represent the county in opioid litigation. That I'll hand it over to Mr. McCree.
Just quickly, Mr. Chairman, you all have gone over this at a recent session. Anyone who turns on their TV these days knows that there is a rising epidemic and crisis of abuse and misuse and tragic consequences of opioids. And so, as this issue has gone forward with even the Food and Drug Administration calling it a public health crisis on March 22nd, 2016... it a public health crisis in March 20, on March 22nd, 2016, counties and cities across the country are now starting to determine that the pharmaceutical industry and the federal government does not seem intent on doing something about this opioid issue that is causing real damage and pain to communities across the country and across North Carolina, not just with regard to the expenditure of money, but with the loss and effect on lives. What has now resulted is that there are many counties and cities across the state, country, that are now filing their own litigation. And those that have filed, all these lawsuits have now are in the federal court and have been sent to the Ohio District Court, where a judge there is overseeing early in initial stages of the litigation. We understand he's trying to push parties into a settlement of some form. It was presented to you back in February, after I went to a county attorney conference to hear about this issue and hear about counties in North Carolina that were entering into litigation against the pharmaceutical company, whether it might be something appropriate for Currituck County to also participate in. An attorney, Gary Whitaker, who is a Winston-Salem lawyer who is associated with the McHugh Fuller Law Firm, which this resolution would propose that you enter into an agreement with that law firm to represent the county, should you decide to participate in this litigation, met with three of you. And of course, we reported that back to the entire board for your consideration as to why Currituck might want to enter into this litigation. The bottom line is that the allegations are that the pharmaceutical company, pharmaceutical companies have not complied fully with federal law, particularly with regard to reporting increased orders of opioid drugs from, I guess pharmacies or physicians to the distributors. The distributors have failed to make the regular and required reports, and that all this has caused a large number of opioids to enter into communities and be diverted for illicit and illegal use. There's also some contention and allegations that these companies have intentionally, over the years, taken what was recognized to be a short-term treatment for pain, and determined that there was a way to perhaps derive greater revenue and profit by starting to push and educate physicians and others to use these opioid medications for long-term chronic pain relief, which has had evidently a bad consequence on communities throughout the country. There are now 42, this particular law firm that is recommended for you to consider representing the county in this, McHugh Fuller, represents over 42 counties in North Carolina currently, including Pasotank and Dare County. The important points of the agreement are that it does not cost Currituck County any attorney fees in order to join, to ask this law firm to represent it and to join in this litigation. There will only be a fee paid if the county is successful in recovering any damages. That fee would be a maximum of 35% of whatever damage award the county might receive and expenses. That amount of money cannot exceed 35% of whatever the county might recover. There are other law firms within North Carolina that will also be participating with the McHugh Fuller Law Firm, but they will be the lead attorneys on this matter. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. McCree, how much, how much time, if any, will your department be involved with this?
I expect that I would, of course, be reviewing any complaint that would be filed on behalf of Currituck County to assure its accuracy. As to being able to establish damages, we did raise that issue with Mr. Whitaker when he met with some of the commissioners. But he assures us that that would be part of the legal representation agreement, that their team would come in and with some assistance from county staff to direct them to the appropriate records, would be reviewing county documents and appropriate records to make a determination at the time that is necessary as to what damages may have accrued to Currituck County. So, my expectation is that they should and will be doing the bulk of the work, although obviously, as with any outside counsel, I would be keeping tabs and monitor their activity.
Any further questions for Mr. McCree? With that, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on, ordinance of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners creating a Veterans' Advisory Board. That I'll hand it over to Mr. McCree.
Before, at your June 4th meeting, you had a work session prior to the meeting where you heard a presentation on the advisability of creating a Veterans Advisory Board to better enable and coordinate veteran access to the VA and other services or community business contacts that might benefit our veterans within our community. The board determined that this would be an appropriate board for Currituck County to also establish. And so, this ordinance indeed establishes a Veterans Advisory Board. I refer you to the ordinance document itself on page one. At lines 19 and 20, creates the Veterans Advisory Board pursuant to your authority under the general statutes to organize the county through the creation of boards and commissions. The next section, at line 21 on page one, establishes the composition. And again, this ordinance is modeled after our other advisory boards, so we can keep everything pretty much in the manner in which the board, over the years, has decided it wants to establish this board. So, it's proposed that this Veterans Advisory Board will consist of seven members who represent veteran program participants, veteran service agencies, veterans, and members of the general public who are interested in veterans' affair, and would also call for appointment of one member of the Board of Commissioners to serve ex officio without a vote for a two-year term. Going on down to line 27, it provides for the appointment of members and their terms in accordance with the manner in which we regularly appoint persons to our advisory board. That would be each of you, of course, having a nomination to put up for the entire board to consider and vote on. The initial board, in order to get staggered terms, would call for three appointees to be appointed for a term of one year, four appointees for a term of two years. Thereafter, all appointments would be made for a two-year term. A person who's appointed for a one-year term by virtue of the other provisions in our ordinance would be eligible to be appointed for a two-year term after their initial one-year term.
And most of the lower groups are allowed to serve two, two-year terms?
That's correct.
So, he actually could have five years?
Yes, conceivably. Section, next page, page two, line one, is a section that speaks to the compensation of members. And like with our other advisory boards, compensation will be established through your fee schedule as you amend that. And they would be reimbursed for expenses incurred during the course of their duties. Upon presentation of proper vouchers and expenses, we provide that same provision for our other advisory boards. Line six provides for the removal of members. These persons, these members shall serve at the pleasure of this board, and so any member may be removed by this board as it sees fit. At line 10, it sets out the duties of this board. It's generally to assist county veterans by serving as a liaison with the community and government agencies to coordinate services, solicit information, provide updates to the community about community activities honoring veterans, report advisory committee activities to this Board of Commissioners, and then perform any other duties that this Board of Commissioners deems to be appropriate and that they are directed by this board by resolution to perform. Line 21, page two, clearly provides, as with all our advisory boards, that this board has no legislative powers, but will act as an advisory board to the Board of Commissioners concerning the matters with which it is charged, and that this Board of Commissioners will receive reports and recommendations from the Veterans Advisory Board. At line 26, the Veterans Advisory Board has the authority to appoint annually from its membership a chairman and any other officers that it deems appropriate for the function of its board. And then lastly, at line 30, the Veterans Advisory Board shall hold quarterly meetings at hours as may be fixed by the board, and then they may also hold special meetings at the call of the chairman upon 48 hours' advance notice, which is in accordance with the open meetings law. That is the ordinance that will create this board, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. McCree? Now, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. If I can make a comment on this, I personally feel this is a proud day for Currituck. This has been a long overdue. We have an enormous amount of veterans here that I feel haven't been served or have been underserved, and I appreciate the board's willingness to make this board a reality. If I can give a shout out to a couple of folks, the Dare County VFW has been instrumental in getting this ball rolling, so I want to thank them. Mr. Smith is still in the audience. He has persevered through quite an evening. Mr. Smith came and gave us a presentation, and it was really great to see the receptiveness of the Board of Commissioners in this regard, and I'm sure we're going to have to arm wrestle to see who's going to get the ex officio spot. So, again, I appreciate everyone's efforts in that, and thank you, Mr. Smith.
I think we appreciate the four members who are veterans on our board.
Thank you. Moving on, ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances to move commissioner comments in the agenda order. I'll hand it to Mr. McCree.
Apparently, the board's trial run and moving commissioner reports to a different location within the agenda has been successful, and so this ordinance is presented to you to authorize a modification of your agenda set forth in Section 2-65 of the Code of Ordinances to move commissioner reports following public comments and prior to administrative reports.
Any questions for Mr. McCree?
Are we going to move county managers' report up there, too?
No, we'll leave him hanging in the back.
We're going to make him stay for the whole meeting.
That way, he can respond.
He can follow up, right.
Open the floor for a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to board appointments. I have two board appointments, if I may. Trillium Regional Health Advisory Board is looking for two folks. One is a citizen, and Ms. Barbara Courtney has stated an interest in that. She has served as the economic development, on the Economic Development Advisory Board for two terms. She has served on the Albemarle Commission Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. And I think she's a good fit for that board, so I recommend that we put her on it.
I'll second that, if that's a motion.
That is a motion, yes, it is.
And I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. I would next like to recommend Ms. Kitty Etheridge to serve on the Trillium Advisory Board as a commissioner. We know her credentials.
Motion for approval?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Ms. Etheridge is filling my position. I will be serving on the Trillium Governing Board, starting in August, I think.
Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
Very good.
Thank you. Mr. Hall, you had a recommendation?
Board of Adjustment, Mike Painter has served well when it comes to those folks that want to appeal what has been suggested by them, by the county. Bill Rawson is an assistant manager with Sherman Williams, who is a county resident. I think would do a well-deserved job for there. He already has experience dealing with some of the state legislation when it comes to bills, et cetera. I've spoke to him at length in reference to needing to be at each meeting because it's that important. We've had other times where they couldn't go without a quorum, so he understands that. He understands the need, and he has the commitment to serve two or four years, depending on how the county feels after his first two years. So, I would like to recommend Mr. Bill Rawson as the next, my next appointment for Board of Adjustment.
I will second that, but has he put in an application yet?
Yes, they did always.
Then I'll second that.
Motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Any more board appointments this evening?
That's all we have on the agenda.
Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda.
Motion for approval?
Couple of questions.
Okay. We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Sorry.
Somebody else can say it.
Second, then we can discuss it.
I'm always the second.
With that, we'll open the floor for discussion. You're fine, thank you.
Under the budget amendment, I noticed under the airport manager, remove business development and airport operations and economic development. Is there a salary schedule to go with that?
We are decreasing the salary to go along with the decreased duties, yes.
Okay. And also, why did we move the custodian out of Public Works and put it on an extension core for this?
Because the way that position has been utilized with setting up the auditorium for people who rent the facility after hours or weekends, and/or who rent classrooms that need assistance with the technology in the room, that it, we had a meeting and discussed that it would be more efficient for that person to stay under the direction of the extension director versus who knows the building, who knows the rental schedule versus having it stay under Public Works.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to county managers' report.
Nothing light, thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. There is a meeting on Thursday with the widening of South Mills Road. Are you aware of that?
I am, I am not.
Okay. I haven't gotten anything public, but if, I didn't know if you would address that, but Lori, do you have the information on that?
I did. I've got notification, a postcard was mailed to me, yeah, Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Moayak Baptist Church. There's going to be a NCDOT public hearing on the widening of South Mills Road. So, it's from 5:00 to 7:00, and the DOT staff will be, the staff and probably consultant will be theirs.
If you guys can attend that, I'll be in Hertford at an Albemarle Commission meeting, so I'm going to miss that. But there is a meeting with NCDOT on the widening of South Mills Road.
I thought it said the Moayak Library.
Well, at 6:00 on Thursday night, the Moayak Library, there is a meeting on a development in Moayak that Justin Olden Quality Homes has scheduled. But this NCDOT meeting is at Moayak Baptist Church. Two events.
Two different events.
I didn't realize that, but I thought one DOT said...
Mine said the Baptist Church.
You got it right. It's Baptist Church, the, there's a flyer.
What's it say?
Baptist, at the Baptist Church.
That's okay. Well, I'm bringing my flyer in so I can...
[laughing].
I just got mine today.
Well, that got confusing quick.
Right.
Thank you for that.
Sorry.
Went it all the way to the end, it confused us.
With that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. We will now open a special meeting of Tourism Development Authority and hand it over to Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, your first item for your consideration is the approval of the tourism budget. Other than the email we got Friday afternoon, it had also several questions related to the OxyTax. You've heard some of those comments tonight. Staff is in the process of answering those. We should have those out by the end of the week. We should have those out by the end of the week. Other than those, I've not received any other questions or comments about the oxy tax budget. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but you are required to have a public hearing before you consider adopting the budget.
And with that, I'll open the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up for the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak?
Eric.
Eric? Anyone?
Sarah?
Okay. With that, I'll close the public hearing and open the floor for a motion.
I'll make a motion and approve the tourism budget.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to TDA budget amendments.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you have a, one budget amendment in your agenda package tonight for your consideration. There is some small adjustments for credit card processing fees, increase those. The largest item is to charge a portion of the mosquito control program to oxy tax.
I, speaking of credit card fees, when I first got joined, I talked, I spoke briefly about a system that allows us to put that back on the user, and so I just want to give you a heads up. I talked to my credit card guy, and he's actually going to be calling you about that, and he works with other county governments, and they're using it successfully to help offset some of the credit card fees.
Okay, great. Look forward to that.
With that, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. I'll now call for a motion to adjourn the special meeting of the Tourism Development Authority.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. I will now open a special meeting Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District and hand it over to Mr. Scanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've received no comments about the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District budget, but you are required to have a public hearing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
And with that, I'll open the public hearing. No one would like to speak to the public hearing?
No.
Mr. West?
Yeah.
No? Okay. With that, I'll close the, I will close the public hearing.
I've moved for approval.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously, and with that, I'll take a ten-minute recess.
Will you come back, please?
We'll be gone.
I second that motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming this evening. Much appreciated. Great meeting, great meeting.
Go team.